Okay, this has to keep talking.
As we speak.
How are you doing?
I'm doing okay.
I know, I know, that's... You guys are a cop out.
Well, when you're right handed and you don't count your right arm.
(laughing). Okay, this has to keep talking.
As we speak.
Hello, Mr. Burton.
How are you, Mr. Burton?
How are you? I'm glad to see you.
Yeah, you might want to rejoin.
Thank you. Well, I have a long way to go, so relatively speaking, I'm not...
Now we can start. Yes, oh.
All right, welcome to Parowin City Council's council meeting. It is May twenty ninth and it is five thirty one. And we're going to have an opening prayer and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mrs. Richardson. Richardson?
Robertson.
Robertson. There we go.
Got your name wrong. Nope.
Oh.
Sorry.
There we go. He did not explain anything to me. I'm looking at the wrong person and saying the wrong name.
My fault.
Thank you. Robinson for the record. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Awesome, thank you. All right, we are now going to ask the council if there is any declaration of conflicts with the agenda items or any areas of personal interest.
No mayor.
No.
No mayor.
All right, and we'll now move into our public comment period. This time is for those of you who came out tonight to talk about things that you are concerned about or have input on. You'll have three minutes each and we will have Sister, wow, I'm calling people Mrs. and Sister and Councilmember Topham to keep the time and she'll let you know if you've used your time. The time is now yours. No, public comment. Yeah.
Jerry Ross, Parowin City Treasurer, and I would like to recognize Callie Bassett for fifteen years of heartfelt, honest, fantastic service to our city.
I forgot my role in this. I was supposed to say we have a problem on the agenda. And I'm so scattered trying to get ready.
I jumped Dan's glory and took it.
No, no.
But we appreciate you so much, Callie, and thank you for everything that you do. And we just wanted to give you a small token of our appreciation.
We had a whole skit lined up. I was going to tell you there was a problem with the agenda.
All right, if there isn't anyone else, I realized I probably needed to make adjustments to the agenda. Um, so our agenda this evening has changed just a little bit. When we look at it, um, let's see. Wow, why am I not seeing the thing I'm looking for? Because it already got adjusted with John... John Oglesby is already not on here.
Yeah, it's on.
It's there. Oh, okay. So John Oglesby will be here to address us next council meeting. So he will not be here with the presentation. And then the second one is item number...
Twenty.
Twenty, on the backside of your agenda. That party will not be here this evening either. So with those changes, I need to have the council, I guess, approve that agenda with those changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So now we are moving into our public hearing and this is to hear comments regarding the proposed annexation of approximately fifty-one point sixteen acres of real property into Parowin City's Incorporated Limits, referred to as the Prime West Development LLC annexation. The fifty-one point one six acres of real property is located immediately east of I-15, roughly between two hundred north and two hundred south and one thousand west and fourteen hundred west. This property is intended to be zoned R-two and R-three. So we need a motion to enter into public hearing.
I'll make a motion to enter into public hearing.
I'll second.
For Prime West Development LLC annexation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And kind of the same rules as the public comments. You can come up, state your name, and we'll tell you when your time's up. All right, with no movement from the audience, a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Right, that motion carries. Moving now into our consent agenda. These are items that are administrative in nature and usually approved with one motion. Item five is the approval of the city council meeting minutes from May eighth, twenty twenty-five, and from May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five work meeting. And item six is the approval of the warrant register for May twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items five and six.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that consent agenda, um, is approved. Now we'll move into our action agenda. These are items that do require a vote. And we will start with item number seven. And he is here. So if he'd like to come up, it would be fantastic. Because we can't see him out there.
That's where it says flight line.
All right, I would like to bring to the council a recommendation for an appointment of Luke Carlson. Um, he is willing to serve as chair on our airport board. He has a great background for this position. Uh, the board members all liked him in that position and so I'd like to bring him to you for recommendations for you to approve and consent him in that new role. Luke, did you want to say anything?
I should be more dressed up. But Dave Norwood gave me this T-shirt twenty-four years ago. Um, yeah, I love this airport. I love Parowin. If I can help do some stuff, I'll be here. If I can, yeah, or if anybody has any questions.
All right, so with that, I need a motion to approve Luke Carlson as our new airport chairman.
I propose, uh, Luca Carlson as a airport board chairman.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, can we just, real quick, thank, um, Dave Norwood. He's not stepping off the airport board. He's just wanting to step down as the chair. In the amount of time he was chair, he did a great job. He is invaluable to our airport and we're grateful for the time he served, so, as the chair.
Thank you for saying that. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
I agree.
Yeah, and thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we are now going to have a presentation by Steve Decker. It will be his annual report on the Parowin Art Program as well as a budget request. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. I was supposed to be here a couple of weeks ago and I, uh, got sick. Couldn't come. Well, thank you. Um, so this, um, presentation, if we were to go slide by slide through it, there are over sixty slides. Um, we're not going to spend that much time here today. But I do want to, uh, tell the council I appreciate this ending of the second year of the Parowin Arts Program. It's been a very successful program and we'll go over some of those successes as we, um, as we talk here tonight. Got to figure out how to run the remote. So first, just a statistical snapshot. The attendance and evaluation of the Third Thursday Programs, those are the ones that we started a year ago. As you can see, the average attendance is sixteen and we have a, uh, an evaluation rating from participants of four point eight out of five. There have been a couple that have been a little low, uh, and we can talk about those maybe as we go through. But, um, we have some also that have just been flat-out fives and that's, uh, uh, that says a lot for the mentors that we have coming. Um, we're going to skip that one. As you can see, it looks like we're going to spend about twenty-two hundred dollars this year of our twenty-five hundred dollar budget. Um, between that and the grant that we received from Utah Arts and Museums for the Creative Aging Grant and some in-kind contributions, the city has turned that twenty-two hundred dollars in cash into about almost a thirteen thousand dollar, um, event, thirteen thousand dollar, I'm lost for the words. Value, that's the word I want, value in that. We did receive a three thousand dollar grant from Utah Arts and Humanities and we'll go through some of that. There's a question mark right there and there shouldn't be. There were seven performances. But as you can see here, um, almost to date, we're at about twenty-five hundred participants in our arts programs. We'll exceed twenty-five hundred because there's still one that has not taken place. That'll take place next month. The biggest one, if you look at the aggregate, would be the, um, Community Choir, not, that's right, the Concerts in the Park Program. Even though those are primarily economic development programs, they have their basis in arts, in music arts. And so we counted those. The single biggest one would be the Christmas Cantata. Um, our demonstrators, um, to date, in the visual arts, I won't go through each of those individually, but as you can see up there, we go after quality people who can teach. And there's a difference between artists who can art, artists who can teach. And we go after those that can do both. Um, and we've got to mention our models. We've had eleven models over the, over the past two years. And that's a hard job, to sit still for an hour or forty-five minutes and not move. Um, that's a, that's a hard job. Um, and we appreciate these people that have done that. Public art, we do have a public art, uh, program here. Well, we're part of a public art program here in Parowin. The mayor is looking for, um, muralists for the pool. Uh, that's pretty much her, uh, responsibility right now. We put it up here because it's an art program. Uh, we do have several pieces of public art. As you go through, as we go through the slides, you'll see those that are boxed or circled in red. Some of these need attention. Uh, and, uh, this is one of them. The, uh, the piece here, out at the Heritage Park, that base is crumbling. Last time I was out there, it truly does need attention. Part of the goals stated when we started this program was to make Parowin a destination, if it's even for an evening. We can verify that people have patronized Sweet Pea Farm on a couple of occasions, Journey's Corner, Jersey's Corner, Parowin Cafe, and even the Valor Hotel as a result of this program. My budget request, uh, we have had twenty-five hundred dollars for the last two years. I'm asking for an additional fifteen hundred this year to give that, uh, a budget, bring that budget up to four thousand. That is for program expansion. Some of that four thousand, maybe all of it, not, uh, some of, sorry, some of the fifteen hundred expansion money, uh, maybe all of it can be covered by participant fees that we would charge for some of these programs. Uh, I would like to keep the Third Thursday Program as it is, um, um, without fee simply because of the success that that's had. Uh, the swimming pool murals are not part of this budget and neither is, uh, the care of public art. And if you want to throw in, uh, you know, a little bit more at that, I think we can, we can start care, you know, start that care. Um, so that's, that's my request. But I want to take just a minute and show you what we've done. And I was going to start my clock here because I, and I didn't, because I can stand here all night. Uh, we talked about the U.A.M.'s, uh, uh, city events, concerts in the park. And as we go through these slides, we'll go through them somewhat quickly. But as we go through these slides, please remember that they are chronological. So I didn't, I didn't group visual arts and music arts and theater arts. So, uh, they'll, they'll come as they came during the year. Our first, um, uh, program this year was, uh, figure drawing with Randy Sealy. Randy teaches at Candy View High School. These are our models and the, uh, work that came out of them. The one that circled, I just love. It is so simple and so easy and I've got to learn how to do that and I haven't yet. One of the participants didn't want to draw the model, so they drew the mentor. And that's, that's okay. Uh, Jet put together an art night in the park. And as you can see, this is an intergenerational art night. There are people there of all ages. They drew about thirty people. Sherry Carlson taught that one. Uh, that came through Parowin City Events. Our August program, um, has some mixed reviews. Um, it, uh-oh. It won't go back. Stop clicking until it catches up. There we go. Uh, had some mixed reviews. We did pastels down at Sweet Pea Farm. And if you've ever done pastels, you learn to swear really fast. They are hard. And most of these people had never touched them before in their life, including me, maybe once or twice. And so, uh, what came out of this is actually quite extraordinary. Uh, the lady circled here, this is Elaine. Elaine was a great supporter of our program. She passed away during this year. Um, uh, but she was to this program earlier in the year. This one is one of the most talked about, um, programs that we have. We, uh, were in front of what was the Construction Monitor Building and Drawing Main Street. You can see the theater here in them. Uh, this person al- almost always watercolors and has, uh, a very unique style. But you can see even here in the perspective drawing, um, uh, some were very technical and some, uh, some were a little looser and not quite so technical. Puffs came. Uh, Matt Cox, uh, wrote that. It was, it was, uh, directed by Dylan Coburn. There were six shows. It's a spoof on the Harry Potter books. And that was held at the theater, of course, under the people that do that, Jet and her, and her group. Fantasy Watercolor with Marta Mitchell. Um, Marta always, almost always receives, well, always has, received full five, um, uh, points, a full five points in her evaluation. She is very, very good. I circled this one because it's interesting. They, uh, the person, participant here painted the dragon and messed up the nose and couldn't figure out what to do with it. So they erased as much as they could and then had steam coming out of the nose to finish the rest. Um, this one was a little bit different than what we usually have done. This is collage. We actually made postcards. Um, and we just cut things out of books and magazines and put them together in kind of an abstract form and made postcards out of those and glued them to postcards. A fun night, wasn't, um, our normal night for us. It wasn't a normal night for us, but it was a really fun night and people enjoyed it. Christmas in the Country with their eleven acts, put together by Economic Development and Jet's crew. Uh, the eighty-first Annual Christmas Cantata. It's sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, but after eighty-one years, it deserves recognition in, uh, in the city's program. It is, it is a cornerstone program for the city. Um, this one, I'm glad we didn't start the program with this one two years ago. Uh, this, this mentor had come and had worked with us before. In this case, he changed his approach a little bit. Uh, State Bank let us into the bank to draw their, to paint their, um, their, uh, Christmas decorations. Uh, the approach the mentor took was you paint and I'll critique later rather than telling us, you know, helping us out. And as you can see, some of those struggled quite a bit. There weren't a lot of people there on that one. And I'm kind of glad, to tell you the truth. Um, on December twenty-fourth, we received a Christmas present. We, that was the day that we were told that we would be funded with our Fabulous Famous Figures Program or for our Fabulous Famous Figures Program, and we'll have more on that as we come along. This one I really, really enjoyed. Urban Sketching, Susan Hewlett and Emma Knupson, um, um, helped us watercolor. Uh, and, and the Rock Church was the theme. These are the paintings that we forwarded to the, uh, Rock Church Commission. Uh, and they can be used for fundraisers, used for postcards or any kind of fundraising activities.
Is this what your group did, Steve?
Say that again.
Is this what your group did here?
Is.
These pictures here, is that what your group did?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, these are the pictures that our group did. Sorry, the older I get, the less I can hear. I need to fix that, but I, I'm a little too vain still. Um, but yeah, these are the ones that were turned in to be, to be used as fundraisers. Colored pencils, uh, for me, go right along with pastels. They are hard and I had never done colored pencils before. But as you can see, they can do some beautiful stuff with colored pencils. Uh, uh, many in the room that night were in the same boat as I was, um, but we had, we had a lot of fun and we learned. Um, if we're going to do figure drawing and I'm going to forward it, you know, we're going to start with Marilyn Monroe because, you know, that's what we, uh, what we do. Uh, so Marilyn came. This is part of the grant. Marilyn came and posed for us and these are the, um, uh, the results from that. I wish that we had time and we don't and I don't even, I can't even do it now because I don't know who did what. But I would like to put them side by side and say, look at the growth that this artist started with and how this artist ended. You can see on some of these, there are some that struggled along a little bit. Um, but by the end of the six weeks, and it was six straight weeks, Tuesday nights, those, everybody was just doing so well. Edgar de God did a lot of studies of ballerinas. So of course, in our grant, we did studies of ballerinas. We appreciate Laura Nelson coming and posing for that. Um, this one and the next slide, we did in the round. Uh, so some people had full fronts, some people had backs, some people had sides and you just drew where you drew. Um, this one, we strategically placed the banner for Utah Arts and Museums and, uh, and this was a, this is a fun story. We had Daniel Bernhardy come and he was the model. And I want to tell you just quickly how we look for things. When I was looking for a model, I was looking at the torso and the trunk and the legs. And I wanted that youthful appearance of a model with some muscle and with some... And I had people, when they came in, they said, "Oh, you got the hair just perfect." There's the hair. You got the hair just perfect. This guy, right here, when it was over with, said, "Where did you get this model?" And I said, "The swimming pool." And we're going to have you model next.
That was me.
That was you, yeah. Uh, uh, "Where'd you get this guy?" I said, "The swimming pool." And he said his hands and feet were perfect. I never interviewed his hands and feet for this position, but, but these artists look at things, all of them, a little different. Uh, at the theater, we had Little Women, seven performances. There are some of the photos from the performances. And then in March, we had Jennifer Rasmussen come. Jennifer does these. They're huge. They're three, four, six, twenty feet, some of them, in, uh, in, in, in length or in height. And, uh, she helped us do acrylic florals. I did circle this one. My wife isn't here, so I can do this. I've been married forty years. Maybe she is here. Is she here?
Be careful.
I put this in the front so she can't stab me.
Um, I've been, we've been married forty years. I had no idea that she could paint like that. And, and just a beautiful, uh, painting, as far as I'm concerned. Do not call it a rose. Call it a ranunculus. If you call it a rose, she'll correct you. Um, Rodan, we had, uh, a model come for The Thinker. This is still, if, if it has the pink background, it's part of that grant. And again, you can see the various, um, um, uh, aspects that people had. Sorry. I'm clicking and it's moving slowly. Uh, Christina's World, this is the most difficult, uh, for the model, the most difficult one that we did in the, uh, figure drawing. Uh, she stayed in that position for just about an hour. Um, she did move a little bit, but her hands and her, her hips were pretty, pretty beaten up by the time she finished that and I really appreciate. This is Ashley Forsyth. I just moved into town, uh, recently. And, uh, we finished the, uh, the, uh, figure program with John Singer Sargent's Madame X because it is the favorite painting of the mentor that came. Whitney Jones was the mentor for these. And, uh, like I said, this is the end. If we could take this and put it next to the ones at the beginning, you would see just mountains of growth. Um, this one I want to touch on quickly and I'm about done. I really am. Um, this program, this particular evening, um, shows the strength of having the city behind the program. Marta, if Marta would have said, "Can I teach a ceramics class at the high school?" And she has asked, that's how we know. Uh, and, you know, we would pay for the materials or the people would pay for the materials, the answer would have been no. If I would have gone to the, to the administration and said, "Can, you know, I, I like this art stuff. Can we do this?" The answer would be no. Having the backing of the city behind that and being able to call the school and say, "I represent Parowin City. Can we do this cooperatively?" The answer was yes and it has been yes for two years. We did luminary. She'd take these, put a little tea candle in the bottom and they show up and they're really kind of nice. We had twenty people at that. Uh, Community Choir Concert, uh, led by Jay Wilkin, Associate Conductor Janice Rouge, and accompanied by Candy Wilk. So about a hundred and ninety, two hundred people to that this year. And just, uh, a week ago or so, um, we did Watercoloring Water at the Meeks Pond with Michael Clark as the, as the mentor. Michael is the president of the Southern Utah Watercolor Society. And, um, we turned out, uh, some of these. This is exactly in the red box. This is exactly what we hope people will do. Actually, this is the artist that did this. His name's Whitney, uh, Jones. He's the same one that, that mentored the figure drawing. He did this at the park that night, at the Meeks Pond that night, uh, in about thirty, forty minutes. And then he did just exactly what we hoped. He went home and he finished it. Uh, I'm particularly pleased with this one because he gifted that to me when he was done. And it's at the frame shop now getting framed. Our final one will be in June with Spike Rass. This will be demonstration only. Spike has, has consented to do a demonstration. Um, we all know Spike and his talent. Um, he is a fantastic watercolorist. And he'll be doing just a, a demo. Anybody can come. Come and draw, come and paint, come and watch. We don't care, especially on this one where Spike is demonstrating. Please feel free to come and watch. Tentative schedule, assuming the four thousand dollar budget for the coming year. You can see that there. We won't go through the whole things. The one in color, uh, are, are additional programs that we hope to be able to do with the additional money. A spring workshop, some sort of a fall something, and perhaps even, uh, create a contest. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do appreciate you for sponsoring this program. It has been a blast and, uh, we hope to keep it going. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I just want to say I'm amazed at the program and the artistic that we have in town, too. Their skills is just beautiful, I think.
Thank you. We have a lot of skilled people and a lot of people that don't think they're skilled. But, um, as I've taken a few... But as I've taken a few online things, you can paint, or you can draw. If you can draw a straight line, a circle, add an S. That's all you need. Those are the only three things you ever use. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for all you do, Steve.
So, Dan, how's our budget for this?
Well, we have, we allocate twenty-five hundred. He's asking for an additional.
Right, how's, how are we for that additional?
I mean, I would say it's a council, it's a council decision. I mean, fifteen hundred dollars. Budgets usually only go in one direction. So I think it's, it's entirely within your purview. Fifteen hundred dollars isn't going to make or break the city. It's just whether you feel like it's appropriate. If we're getting a bang for a buck. We, I mean, this is a, this is, this is an operational budget request change, not a one-time. If it was a, if it was a one-time thing, I'd say, hey, maybe this is a wrap tax request type thing, which we are going to put into effect next year. But I, but I believe this is just an operational consideration, so.
Steve, do you think we're going to get the grant again?
No, I don't know. With the, with the cuts in the grants that are coming to arts programs out of, out of DC. And this would have been federal money that flowed through a state organization. I don't know if we would get the grant again. And that grant would be specific. We would have to write a, a specific program, like we did with the figure drawing. We have a couple, actually, in mind. One is, we're gonna, we're thinking about doing a grant if it comes open again. And let me back up. That grant is a creative aging grant. It is for people fifty-five and up. So it's not a, you know, it's not a whole community. We're thinking about doing one called.
Aging?
Aging, yeah, fifty-five. So.
Mature.
We would do. We're talking about one, calling it Drawing on Parowin. Where we would go to various architectural sites down Main Street and draw those sites for the night. The mayor's house, the house next to couple up, on the corner, the courthouse, you know, and see what would happen there. But I, I can't guarantee that grant. I can't even guarantee it'll be open to apply for.
Well, I trust you, Steve. So I move to approve the budget request for the Parowin Arts Program.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Item number nine is the Little Salt Lake Service Club budget request. And Lyman Mumford is here to present that to us.
I keep looking for something to come up on the screen. But anyway, thank you for, I guess, inviting me. I'd like to just share with you a little bit about what the Little Salt Lake Service Club does. It's been going on for over forty years. Long time. And when John passed away, then I inherited the presidency of the organization. Because I was the only one that knew what was going on. But let me, it's, it's been a fun, fun service organization. We, you see every holiday, the flag's on Main Street and Center Street. We put out normally one hundred and thirty-three flags. And it costs about us to replace one of those flags, almost fifty dollars, with a steel stamp mass and a quality flag that we want to put on.
Excuse me, Lyman, how much?
Fifty dollars.
About fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And I just replaced, or built seven new flags. Because they do wear out. Some of them get caught in trees and get torn by the limbs or they're hanging by that. But normally, we put out about ten holidays. The reason is, is because the last one, yes, the November, around November eleventh, it's a veterans' holiday. It's supposed to be winter, okay? It wasn't winter last year. So we put the flags out because the water in the flag holes in the top of the curb was not frozen. So we put them out for President's Day and Martin Luther Day and those kinds of things. And, and last year, or the year before, if you remember, we had three election days. With the Democratic Election Day and then we had the, the, oh, what do I want to call it? The primary, there we go. The primary and then the general election. We, we sponsor the Easter egg hunt at the soccer field every year. And usually, the people are backed up before we allow them to come in on the soccer field. Turn back to the baseball diamond. And it takes us a good two hours just to set it up, ready for the kids to come in. And it takes them about thirty-five seconds.
Or less.
To clean the grass. And there's nothing there. It's a lot of fun for them. And our brother Sherliffe is a rabbit. And that's been going on for so many, many years. And they hand out the Rice Krispie bars to the kids while they're standing on the heights, on the sidewalk, before we get ready to let them in. I guess you'd say we're a senior organization. Because we have only retired, mostly retired people that helps us. We also have a float on the three holidays. We like to put a float in there to support the city with, with the floats that they're. And, and it's a lot of fun doing that. We, on, on the jelly beans that we put for the Easter egg, it's about ninety pounds of jelly beans and plastic eggs. And then some of the eggs will have a prize number so that the kids get that, then they can go to the concession stand and get a prize. We also provide the candy for the Christmas in the country. And we try to do about two hundred plus bags of candy for those that come. And it's well attended, well attended. And I, you know, speaking of candy, I say that that's, support your local dentist.
Yeah.
We also take care of the park, the, the farm machinery park east of the firehouse. And when I say we take care of it, we also try to control the weeds. And with the spring rains that we had, they really flourished well. So. I don't know if you have any questions, but it's, we only ask for a donation from those who participate with us with the flags of twenty dollars. Which doesn't go too far. And not everybody that receives a flag, either on Center Street or Main Street, contributes. They try to find who they are, see if they will in person, and some don't. But we'd still leave the flag there. I don't know whether that's a good idea or not, but anyway, just out of kindness. Are there any questions that any of you have that you'd like to ask me?
How much of a donation are you asking for?
Well.
Do you have a number in?
Let me share with you. I think two years ago, or thereabouts, I made a presentation and I think I asked for sixty dollars. And Brother Burton, heir David Burton, I think, he said, "That's not enough." But then I heard one of the council members, not, not part of the council now, but said, "I don't like to do this because there may be other organizations that's going to come to the council and want more money. They're going to want more and more." And I know the, the thing we don't, I don't want to do is I don't want to have you increase the taxes on our property to try and support these kinds of things or these events. If we had a thousand dollars on it, that's awful. Fifteen hundred, we can always use it. We're always in the hole. Because over the years, we have accumulated a pretty good surplus. But that's diminishing. And when we send out a hundred mailings, that's seventy dollars plus. I mean, seventy plus cents for first-class postage.
Seventy-three.
That, and you experience that. And prices of everything is going up. And you experienced that also. So it's, whatever you will support us with. Let me say this much. We put a flag out on every city-owned property on Center Street or Main Street. And I think it's somewhere around sixty to eighty dollars that we receive from the city and we appreciate that. And that's twenty dollars a pop per flag, okay? So whatever you're willing to do is, we welcome very much, okay? Any questions?
How many do you put out on city? Do you know exactly? How many flags do you put on the city?
I think there's about eight.
Eight on city property?
I think so, yeah.
And you're getting eighty dollars?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I just know, like, from the public's perspective, they think the city puts out the flags. Because I've had a lot of people say, "Oh, the city makes Main Street look so pretty." And, you know, the Easter egg hunt's so wonderful that the city does. And I always feel bad. I, like, I say, "The city doesn't do that." And I know how hard you work on behalf of the city. And you make the city look really good. And, and the things that you do definitely enhance our city and our quality of life and unify all of us. I think, you know, the first thing I think of when I walk out is, oh, yeah, it's that day when I see the flags. I think it helps us all unite around the things that we, we share value in. And so, you know, I think, just to have money to be able to replace flags, you know, to be able to take care of that program, the labor side of it. I mean, you talk about what it costs in postage. I mean, your labor and putting those flags out, picking them up, doing all the invoicing, trying to chase the twenty dollars, you know, all those things. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of value to our citizens. And so, I mean, I don't know if one of the council want to make a motion and, and state an amount. But, I mean, knowing that you go in the hole to do this, really, isn't okay with me. And I know there currently isn't a line item for this, but this isn't like a, a random organization. This is a, how many-year-old organization? Did you say forty?
Forty.
Forty-plus is what he said.
Yeah.
Mayor, I think it needs to be not just a motion for this year, but we need to have it part of the budget. So it's a continuing, a budget item, a line item.
I agree. Because the city gets so much out of it.
So do we need to do that now? Can we do that now? How can we do that, Dan?
So, in, in our non-departmental department, I don't know why it's called that. We have a department that's called non-departmental. And where we have, we have a few miscellaneous things like this. That's where the Art Commission, we just heard a presentation on the Art Commission. We have a small maintenance line item in there for the Rock Church, for the Heritage Foundation, beautification, Chamber of Commerce, so forth and so on. If this is something you would like to have, be a, some sort of a, a line item that could be recurring and we could look at every, from year to year, how much we put in there, that would be the place to put it. If you wanted to do one, one time, I would say that, you know, we, we, we put it in a sundry items in that department. Just looking at this year's budget, the sundry items is, the budget is almost spent. But if you wanted to put it in next year's budget, which starts July first, I could add a line item to the budget for whatever you want to put in there. And that would be the way to go about doing it, Dave, if you want.
Well, I move that we create a new line item for the Little Salt Lake Service Club. And I move to start it, and I'm sure we can adjust. I, I maybe we start this at fifteen hundred dollars. What do you say, Rochelle?
I say we do two thousand.
Two? Well, if we can do it, two thousand.
It is a great benefit to our community. They shouldn't be having to fund the replacement of the flags that go on our Main Street. They shouldn't have to be funding, out of their own pockets, the Easter egg hunt and, and such like that. I think if we can do it, I would, I would like it to be two, two thousand.
So, two ways of doing this. One, it could be, we literally make a donation, we write the check. Two, we have that line item and they, they, when they're buying supplies, come and we write a check to reimburse for the supplies for specific things that are approved. One, we're going to write them a check every year. The other, they're going to say, "Okay, this is what it costs for flags this year." And then we'll write a check to the flag company. There's two ways of doing it.
I think we need to have it as a flat rate, don't we, just as a, as a budget item? So whatever that amount, and I think we need to agree on it and then create a budget line item.
So one of you would need to make a motion of the amount.
Well, you kind of started the motion and I kind of was, was staring you down. Sorry, I don't mean to stare you down.
Because we can adjust this. I mean, we could start it and then see how it goes. And then we could increase or decrease. So I, I'd leave it at fifteen hundred. I'll make a motion to make a line item budget for fifteen hundred to start this. So, line item budget item for the Little Salt Lake Service Club.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Lyman, for all you guys do.
They're twenty dollars for my parents' old house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you for everything you do. We really, really appreciate it.
We get some very nice compliments from the people in the community. Some cases, it's people just visiting Parowin. And I've heard its flags happened to be out that day. And, and just express their gratitude for the patriotism and having such a beautiful, beautiful Main Street and Center Street with those flags just gently waving at you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for that flag. I'm sorry we haven't taken care of it before.
Thank you. See you, my friend.
See you.
All right. Our next item on the list is the discussion and decision of whether to allow Dwight Hargit to place a sign on the traded parcel, subject to conditional use permit by Planning Commission. And Dwight's here tonight. We, we tabled this and waited for him to be here so that we could ask him questions.
Thanks everyone for having me down here. I don't know if you want to start with your questions or if you want me to explain a little bit first?
You could explain and then we can ask questions. I think that's a good idea.
Sure. So the triangular property that you see in the middle of the screen behind you is the current lot that I own. I was going to build a red iron barn on that property. And in talking with the city, we came up with the idea for land swap as a benefit to both the city and myself. And it was a good deal. The only thing that I, I feel like I'm losing in this deal is the visibility that I have from anyone coming off, coming down north Main Street. I guess it would be up north Main Street. And so I would like to ask that I can put, put a sign on the south-facing side of that property that can let people know that we've just moved a few blocks down, or we're next, next to the UDOT building. So I have a, like, sort of an example of the signs that I was going to put up with a slight adjustment. And then I looked on the city ordinance at the size that you guys would allow. And so I guess you guys would probably make that determination. Like, it was like eight by twelve or eight by twenty, depending on what you're, how do you say, like, categorizing me under? So that's pretty much it.
How long would you want to have it there?
I would say at least a couple of years until we get established. As I was working towards this, I told a lot of people that we were going to be right behind the Family Dollar. And so I don't want there to be confusion when we open. People don't know how to find this.
Is that city property or UDOT property? That, you said you're going to put the sign in where that grassy area is, next to Family Dollar?
Yes.
Like, behind Family Dollar?
Yep. That's the lot that I currently own that is being swapped with the lot next to the UDOT facility a few blocks away.
So if it's swapped, it'll be city property that you'll be placing the sign on?
Yes, sir.
My only concern is if we do it for for one, I can I can see potential other people wanting to do it as well. That's a concern that I have.
On different city property?
Mm-hmm. Or on that property.
Yeah, or on different ones, but.
Yeah.
Have you asked anybody else or, I mean, is that a good location? I mean, that's off from that old Paragon Highway. It's not really that visible from the Main Street, is it?
Yeah, it's main, it's visible coming or heading north. Cause I I have the, I already have the building pieces on the lot. As I'm as I'm coming down, I can see the pieces on the ground.
Have you asked anybody else?
What's what sort of a timeframe are you wanting to have a sign on there?
We're not breaking ground in July. It looks.
No, I mean, how long duration?
Uh, two years.
Oh, two years, I missed that.
Sorry.
But back to my question, have you asked anybody else, the private property owner that may be able to accommodate that and accomplish the same purpose for you?
No, I guess, I guess in my mind, since I was already in talks with the city about this land swap and it hasn't been completed yet, um, I wanted to, I guess, ask, so.
I think you ought to ask a private property owner. And then if you can't get anybody, then maybe it'd be something we could consider.
Is the land swap contingent upon us allowing you to put the sign on that property?
No, only because I'm really behind already and I wanted to get things moving, so. Either either way, I'm okay. It'll work out. It's just something that I wanted.
I don't see the problem with helping him out, you know, like even if it's just a one year sign and then you pull it down after one year. All we're doing is helping a a future business get established where people can find him where he thought that he was going to be. And now he's going to be back a little bit farther. I don't see the problem just letting him do it.
And he's doing it for us.
Yeah, it's like this is helps us, helps him. It's a two way street, um, you know, it's a two way deal on this. I I don't see the problem letting him do it.
Are you gonna want to sign for your business on that property? Cause if people don't know where you are.
Why would I want to sign on it?
I I'm just, I'm just saying you're on that street too.
I'm twenty years, seven years established, I'm all right.
You're good.
They want to find me a little thing.
Can I, can I add, or sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir?
You're good.
Um, I, can I just add that, um, on the on the sign at the bottom, I'm gonna put what we specialize in and that's competition, self-defense and counter bullying. And I know that a lot of people who have been on Cedar City group chats and Parwan group chats have heard people talk about bullying. I am a specialist in violence and I teach kids how to prevent violence. I teach kids how to deescalate situations. I teach kids how to stay out of bad situations. And so having a sign that people can see, oh, this this person specializes in teaching active self-protection, I think that's something Parwan can really use. That's one breath.
Good job.
Is this something that the planning and zoning should approve?
It is. Um, it's a conditional use to to put an advertising sign on another piece of property like that. So we should, um, it and that is something that they approve, not the council. So you guys can say you're good with it, but it does need to go, it does need to.
Okay, that was.
Simple fact that he's helping us and we're helping him. And it's like a one, I just state a one year term and let it go, let him do it.
He wants it for two.
Yeah, I'm saying one.
One year would be okay, wouldn't it?
I think one year he'll be fine.
I would be okay with one year for sure.
Well, let's, okay, well, then I, where is that?
It's number ten in the action agenda.
So we'd have to, what, just make a recommendation to send this to planning and zoning? Is that correct? Cause we're not approving anything.
What you're doing is you're saying that you guys, you you guys are comfortable with with it going on city property as long as the conditional use goes through.
A positive recommendation.
Yeah, and then state the size of the sign, so.
Yeah, and is the sign eight by twelve?
Um.
Cause that's the maximum size on a on that sign.
Oh, yeah. Uh, it won't be this sign. I'm gonna make a new one. This was the first one.
Well, wouldn't planning and zoning determine that?
No, it's so our, by the way, we do need to work on our our sign ordinance. Um, this is what you call an advertising sign. Um, maximum size is eight by twelve and it's a conditional use in a highway service. So that's that's just straight from the code. So, um, that's how that would work.
So do I have a motion on this with the detail? That would be great.
I'd make a motion to allow him to have a sign on that property. Um, I'm fine with an eight by twelve for up to one year when he starts his building. Or when when would you want to put it like, like when you start the building and you're ready to open or how, what timeframe, I guess, we want to see when you want to state, put it up?
I could put it up in July.
So from July to July, so. Hope that motion makes sense.
That makes sense.
To move it to planning and zoning.
So that, yeah, that'd be a recommendation to planning.
Okay, and move it to planning and zoning.
Well, you, you know, we agree, whatever.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eleven. This is the ordinance to adopt changes to land use code known as rural done right.
Mayor, I'd like to pass these around. Would you just take one and pass them? Scott here.
So what this is, is the document printed and copied? Is that what we're handing out?
No, this is the one that was first given. And I want to take a little time and make a statement if I could.
All right.
Okay. Rural Done Right was presented to the council in this form that I just passed around. And, um, I believe it's our our retreat or whatever you want to call it in February. And then at that time, it was basically embraced and supported and endorsed by the council. And then it's since has been, you know, passed around. And I mean, we've presented this in this form to different groups. And they've, that's what they've kind of, they've reviewed and and sent back their responses. But, uh, in this, you know, summary, if you look at this, it gives a kind of a, if you look at the front, it gives really the the purpose of this rural done right. And there's a lot of vision and thought put into this. And it was, you know, you read that like opening statement and it's, that pretty much gives a pretty good synopsis of what Parwan, what we want for Parwan. And the bullet points, as you read down, it says, keeping Parwan rural, slow managed growth, pro-family, pro-business, pro-heritage. And I think that's what, you know, we want to to truly try to emulate in our community. And there was the, you know, there was a couple of issues that, well, the part of that original was to not allow townhomes, condominiums, apartment buildings, planned unit developments. And then on the seconds, what I want to emphasize, the second page under encouraging affordable rural family housing. When we go down those bullet points and it says allows twin homes, we never had, you know, duplexes that had allowance for separate ownership with a common wall in our R two zones. This is, this is huge. This is a huge, you know, concession. And then permitting stack threeplexes, fourplexes with separate individual ownership, as long as they resembled single family home structure. And I'm trying to just highlight these at promoting court cottage court housing, allotting smaller lot and home sizes. I mean, these were huge concessions. This was really to allow affordable housing for people that, you know, on this, what I guess is the big issue now, affordable housing. But and then the first time home buyer program, that is really huge to allow incentives and discounts on on the impact and building fees for for young families. So, you know, when you look through this, and there's more to it. I mean, we haven't addressed some of the things like our annexation, shrinking our annexation map and and things. We have addressed the sewer and the water issues, which, you know, is very important. But, uh, you know, when you read through this and the objectives that we're trying to achieve is to try and really protect the character of our community. And and, you know, summary, you know, townhomes don't, they don't fit and they're they're not compatible with the character of Parwan. And there's a couple, there's a lot of definitions. And I could read, there's, I got like fifteen, but all the common thread is, you know, what is it? Here's one, townhomes are known as rural houses considered constructed, you know, for high density housing and in, you know, in their urban environments. And that's what the common thread is and through all of the, all these definition. Town townhomes can be a form of high density housing in urban areas. And, you know, and then it states that they, one thing is that they share common walls and and, uh, I don't know where those different, but common walls, common roofs and different things. Yeah, so, you know, the common thread is that townhomes are for urban environments, for high density situations. And we in this rural done right, the thing, we have addressed those same needs and those same issues by allowing, you know, common or individual ownership in common and, uh, twin home and and, uh, common wall homes in, you know, what you call duplexes. Reducing the lot sizes and court cottage courtyards and all these things. I mean, so really, the the townhomes are basically a duplication of what we've already done. But it does not really fit in with the character, you know, of our community, you know. Rural Done Right, you know, accomplishes the same needs with these, you know, points that I've addressed. The town townhomes try to accomplish without compromising the rural character of Parwan. And then Parwan has a unique character based on rich heritage that creates a custom and culture which cannot be replicated, but can be easily lost. We are at that crossroads right now that our decisions are going to determine the destiny of this community. And this is one of the great, you know, one of the ways which we can do that. Rural Done Right helps to preserve that unique individual character known only to Parwan, the mother town. There is nothing wrong with being different. We don't need to go to other communities. We don't need to go look at what others are doing. We need to worry about what Parwan is and what we want to have Parwan be. And Parwan can take pride in being an example and preserving its core value and be the city on the hill whose light shines for all to see. We need to keep in, I think, that cookie cutter definition. And we need to realize that the the changes that were made were recommendations. And, uh, we need to just realize what is applicable for Parwan, what preserves our identity, our custom, our culture and our character. And this is what we need to to really consider because this is addressing everything that townhomes do and accomplishes everything and every purpose that a that townhomes can, but yet preserves the integrity of our community in doing so. And I think we need to be that example and take the courage and be able to do that. And, uh, and I know you may have more to say, but I, with that, and because I don't think townhomes really fit into this, the integrity of this vision of this document that we were trying, what we were trying to accomplish, I move to approve rural right in its pure form as originally presented in this document with its contained contents. And it exclude townhomes and make sure that cookie cutter definition stays in there.
Can I ask you a question on that motion?
Okay.
Um, I I propose, I have presented two ordinances ready to go. Are you saying that you don't like the one ordinance that has townhomes excluded and you'd like it modified?
As long as it doesn't exclude anything here. I couldn't find cookie cutter in there, Dan.
So the Planning Commission, um, discussed, they they didn't like the phraseology of cookie cutter?
They, that was a recommendation by, because of a comment of one individual. And then we discussed it and says, we want it left in as a that commission.
Who's we?
The commission.
Okay, so what was left in for cookie cutter is actually under manufactured homes, in the manufactured homes, um, code, where it talks about if you're doing an entire subdivision of the majority, like it was more than eighty percent, then we wanted to avoid a cookie cutter look. Um, but the the cookie cutter language in the R three re related to, um, townhomes, that came out very early on. In fact, I looked at all of the recent, any of the recent, um, documents and and cookie cutter came out fairly early on, but was left in that in that, uh, manufactured home area. Let me, let me just point out the differences between the two and and see if it satisfies what you're looking at, what you're looking for.
Well, I don't know, like, do we need to run through the motion that's on the table?
But there is a motion. I'm just, my my question is, is, okay, so I won't get into that. The word cookie cutter doesn't show up anywhere in either of these documents, other than than the manufactured home. We do talk about single family neighborhoods, blending with them and all of that stuff. I'm just clarifying if if we, with this motion, if we can even move forward tonight.
Well, I wanted to circle back around that how we got here is we left our last meeting saying we were gonna bring two different formats of the changes to our ordinances, one with townhomes included and one without townhomes included. And the council all agreed, then once we had these in front of us, then we would make a vote on which one we wanted to adopt. I just don't know if we need to play out, so if there's not a second, then we can go into, okay, then is it one of these? Because I feel like we were prepared tonight to look at these two.
Sure.
And choose between the two that were prepared for this meeting.
And that's my, my clarification is, is, is it, does the motion, is one, is either one of these gonna satisfy that motion? That was my que clarified question.
Okay, well, then we can rephrase with, make the motion to accept the the, what what would you call your presentation? What'd you call your?
I would just call it the ordinance that that restricts townhomes.
Okay, I'd say the ordinance that 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 does not include townhomes.
So could you put cottages, courtyard cottages?
That is in, it's in both of them.
I'll second that motion.
So is that the version that was prepared for the meeting tonight?
Since we do have a motion that has passed the first and second, can I, can I just clarify the differences?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, when we got done kind of working this, um, document, just just for the public that's here and maybe wasn't in the planning commission stages, uh, we had a document that was prepared and kind of worked through it with the planning commission. We had a public hearing. After the public hearing, the vote went nowhere with planning commission. And they they decided to table it. And, um, the reason was really kind of just the town, the planning commission didn't feel comfortable moving forward the way it sat. And really wanted to see, have some more discussion on townhomes. So it came back and another, um, agenda item later. And we made the following changes, which is the only issues that I addressed in converting the two documents or comparing the two documents. We're in the R three code talking about permitted uses. That's on both sides. That's on both sides. On the left side, we have, sorry, on the right side, we have the language that was going to move forward with, sorry, on the left side, that was going to move forward without townhomes. And you'll see it says here, these are what are permitted, triplex or fourplex dwellings having separate ownership when approved. Um, the planning commission added into that triplex, fourplex or townhome dwellings, right? That's the main difference there, the only difference. Then, we modified the next thing here where it said, all triplex, fourplex dwellings must meet the following design elements with the intent of appearing like a single family home to be, to ensure they blend with single family neighborhoods in order to preserve the loo- the rural look and feel of Parwin. That sentence was modified to, all triplex, fourplex or townhome dwellings must meet the following design elements in order to preserve the rural look. So, basically, the word townhomes was added in and the intent of appearing like a single family home to blend with single family neighborhoods was removed. And then finally, what I told the, the planning commission, if you're going to add back in townhomes, you have to deal with the lot size. And so, um, the only other difference between these two documents was dealing with the lot sizes. Um, and in one case, you have six thousand square feet for a single family. Duplexes and twin homes shall be the same as, as R two zone. That's ten thousand square feet, for those that don't know that off the top of their head. And then, triplexes and fourplexes of single ownership have a lot area of not less than fifteen thousand and twenty thousand square feet respectively. So, the easy, the rule of thumb here is five thousand square feet per residential unit. Does that make sense when you're getting into duplexes, triplexes or fourplexes? That's the way it is in the no townhome version. What was changed when they introduced townhomes back in was this sentence right here, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes of separate ownership shall not have a lot area of not less than three thousand square feet multiplied the number of units. So, you can see there's a, there's a major difference in density on triplexes and fourplexes, three thousand square feet per residential unit. That's assuming that you're, you're having a common wall and it's separate ownership in those things. And, um, and then, of course, the fact that you've introduced townhomes back in. So, that was a way to do a traditional that townhome and figure out how you could designate the square footage. This was critical since, um, we're not gonna do PUDs. If we're gonna permit townhomes and we're gonna permit them by right in the zone, we have to define the lot size, and that was done. So, that's the only differences between the two. Um, the cookie cutter language had come out far prior because they just didn't like it. They didn't like, it didn't really describe something. It was kind of vague. So, it really didn't have anything to do with townhomes or not, they just didn't like the language. The main focus was whether or not we were gonna say these things, threeplexes and fourplexes need to look like single family residences or not, and the other things I talked about.
Right.
That's the only difference in the documents. So, one is lets you do townhomes like you traditionally would think of townhomes, and the other one says, threeplexes and fourplexes is all you get.
And I know, I just wanna clear up the public perspective on some of these things or perception. They're like, the city council isn't protecting us and things like that. Parwin's always allowed townhomes, condominiums, apartments. This is not, not something we've added. We're looking at it now to see if we want to change that or keep going like we've been going. So, that's how we got here.
So, having said that, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Are we calling a townhome version and no townhome version?
It's without townhomes. His motion's without townhomes.
Mm-hmm. All right, so we have a motion on the table to not include townhomes. And we have a second to that motion. All those in favor?
It's an ordinance, so we probably have to do roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call vote, thank you.
So, why don't you just say, yes, a motion to adopt the ordinance without townhomes, by roll call vote, that's what you just said.
Okay, a motion to adopt the ordinance without townhomes by roll call vote, starting with council member, Topham.
Roll shell Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
That motion carries.
Uh, you guys went a long way around the barn on that one, so.
All right, thank you. All right, moving now to item number twelve. And this is the discussion and approval of the final language of AJM annexation agreement subject to developer, developer approval. And Dallas, I just want you to know I took criticism for you standing as long as you did the last time, standing with no water.
I brought a water this time.
And do you want a chair?
No, I'm, I, I hope it's not as long tonight.
Okay.
Me too.
It better not be. And our city manager is going to start us out on this one.
Okay. You'll notice I'm, I'm keeping my comments to the minimum possible throughout this meeting in the interest of time. Um, everybody was there for the five hour meeting, that Dallas stood there for two and a half hours or whatever it was, I have no idea. Um, uh, we, we ended up with, with, um, working through the line items, um, created a, a version of the, of the development agreement slash annexation agreement and sent it to, um, Dallas's client. And, um, after some rework by, uh, his client and attorney, sent us back a redlined version. I did send out to the council a summary of the more salient items. And, um, essentially, it boiled down to, um, the, the clause on vested rights, um, which is particularly, well, let me put it this way, it was a lot more important until we just barely took care of the last item. One of the reasons why the council was very concerned about this sentence right here, this clause in process to be modified, was the council wanted to make sure that whatever was worked on in Rural Done Right would apply to, to the subdivision. And that's why we had the phrase in there, um, that any ordinances in process to be modified would also apply. Um, Greg, the, the, uh, the, the, your client's attorney didn't like that phrase and removed it. It's not important if we have Rural Done Right, it's not as important if Rural Done Right has been adopted, which it just has. So, I guess I'm not really worried about that. I don't know if, Scott, you have any concerns? Are you comfortable with the way that that vested rights paragraph ended up?
Yeah, well, you received my email.
Yeah.
And, um, the concerns that I had, if, if the application was made at the time the ordinance were in place, we would have to honor that. I saw the language of your council that said, uh, they simply want to be held to the ordinance as it is, which I concurred with.
Yeah.
Uh, on the other hand, um, the city is in a position, as I relate to you in the email, to negotiate in good faith. I didn't like the amount, you know, the donate.
But we're not at that point yet on the parks.
All right.
This is just the vested rights.
Yeah, I mean, if they wanna, uh, uh, make that, uh, argument, I think that we accept that. But then that also goes into whether or not the council wants to approve or deny the annexation.
Sure.
Frankly. So, I, I, I wouldn't wanna make that a legal point, uh, I would say concede that to them and then we go forward under the ordinance, under their vested rights, uh, argument, and then we consider it on those terms.
Okay, the other kind of, kind of maybe not a big deal or maybe a big deal, just depends on the county's, the council's opinion, is the other, the other thing in this paragraph that was modified was this next little sentence. After all this in red, it says, if the property owner fails to initiate development within, we had it within ten years, um, from the effective date of the annexation, the city reserves the right to reconsider zoning designations and land use approvals in accordance with ex, applicable law. Um, they modified that to twenty years. Um, and, and, and as I, I was talking to Dallas on the phone earlier today, I don't know that that's the, the big deal that it, that it could have been. Um, if we were giving some major concessions in this development area and we, like, how long you wanna just sit there with this, with, with all of these concessions, sitting out there with no, nothing started, um, could potentially be a concern. The reality of where it ended up, I don't know if there's any, you know, we didn't, we don't have this very custom zoning map with density restrictions and all this stuff for some future council twenty years from now to try to figure out. So, it's really not that big of a deal to me that if it hasn't started within ten years that, that we go back in and reconsider zoning or something like that. But it, that's, one of the other changes was the ten to twenty years. Um, you wanna talk about it or do you wanna, there's only two other items for me to point out and we can just let it go where it was. Um, the other major change was, was frankly, is, is related to the parks, which is where Scott was headed. Um, and that is, um, we had, um, put in here a requirement to, um, rather than, um, install parks and, um, open space within the development, we, in lieu of that, wanted to see a, a donation to the, to the nearby city park or recreation area that is not yet completed. And we had, after back and forth, we came up with a number of acreage and figured out the value of that, and we ended up arbitrarily at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That, um, has been struck from this and replaced with, um, the clause that said that the, uh, that the owner, um, will just comply with the, with the city's, um, code on what we require for parks in subdivisions. And, and the challenge with that, of course, is that our code doesn't require anything. So, effectively, we're in the space of if we accept the, the, the language that has been countered with, potentially, they could put no parks in and, and be current with our code. So, if we either change our code before the subdivision goes in to require something or we negotiate on this point, because we do not have a requirement with our code.
And again, if we're back to, if we're back to the vest, you know, the vesting argument, then we're stuck with the ordinance.
Yeah.
And that, uh, then, uh, goes to the developer saying, uh, we'll comply with the ordinance as is in our annexation agreement, which means no open space, which, uh, then goes to the council and you have every right to say, well, if they wanna come in and, and, uh, put in this, uh, request for a huge annexation with no open space, that's a point that the council would then, uh, take into account in voting yes or no.
So, the, the only other really issue of, of any sort of merit is, um, we had asked, uh, at the end that we be given, uh, written notice before, prior to transfer of ownership. And, um, and Greg, the attorney, said that this language is unnecessary and inappropriate, um, since any successor owner will be bound to the terms of the agreement. Once the agreement is approved, the owner's vested property rights are legally alienable. Um, we wanted to, um, we wanted to have some sort of a say in, in whether, i- i- again, if we gave a lot of concessions with this development agreement, we wanted some say if the annexation goes through and rather than Alex Meisner coming in with a subdivision, sells it to a developer that is, that has a less of a character than Alex, that the city could say, whoa, hang on a second. We don't know if we wanna give those same concessions if, if that, if, if this were to be sold to somebody else. Now, there is, um, so this is, that was just another tricky area there, and, and again, that's been, that's been removed. The fact that we, our, our concessions have, have been largely, um, I mean, I think we've, we've kind of knocked off all of the, kind of the hairy edges and the, the hardest corners of, of things from both ends, from what the city was requiring and maybe what the developer was asking for. We're not in that extreme of a, um, of a development agreement, from my opinion. So, are we comfortable with it as it sits? If, if it is to be sold on day one after annexation, are we comfortable in, you know, still extending those same terms to any?
And you got my email on that.
But could you re, could you recap or I can pull it up?
Yeah, I looked at several, uh, development agreements. I sent some language. I spoke with city attorneys who are smarter than I am, which wasn't hard. And, um, uh, it's very common that the city, if, if we're having, uh, an annexation and we have an agreement, which is a relationship with parties that come before us, to require, uh, in the agreement, that the city not only, uh, have the opportunity to review it, but, uh, to consent to it, to flat out consent. Because if, if we make an agreement with Alex and represented by Dallas, ably, people we know, people that we've looked in the eye and have represented to us the quality and the nature of the annexation, and then tomorrow, uh, or as soon as it, if it, if it's approved, they transfer it, um, it's very common to require that they give the city notice of this is our intent of who we're transferring to and for the city to consent to that. And once again, if they don't like, like that or wanna do that, then that can be, if it's a hard point on the part of the developer, then the city can take that into account when they vote up or down on the annexation.
So, that's it. That's pretty much, which is, which is not a long list, considering where we've started from, right?
I have a question, Dan.
Yeah.
We mentioned before, you know, about transportation. We keep mentioning that one hundred north. I know they can't, we can't hold them to appro, do any improvement work and so on, but it needs to be taken in consideration if the county comes through with that, that they have it in their configuration and their planning to be able to, you know, I guess, hook on to it or use it in their planning.
Yeah, and I'm just scrolling up to where we, where we dealt with that, so we can re, so we can look at that language. I know that's been a, something that's bothered you since we finished. System improvements, uh, yada, yada. We did, and, and, and we did vote on this, and, and I, I, and I remember you making a statement that, that as you're devising your subdivision, um, that you would work with how one hundred north ties into your subdivision. Do you wanna address that while I'm looking at this again?
Yeah, so, just from a, a general standpoint, whenever a city has a master plan, um, everything that's within our property, we plan and lay out and fully improve to whatever the master plan is. So, as long as one hundred north is on the city's master plan, we would show a future intersection tying into that. Um, I think where we landed on this was that we were gonna have two hundred and city view. Um, and so, if we're developing the portion where one hundred north is going to tie into our project, we would account for an intersection and a road going through our project. But from the edge of our project through the county to one hundred north, that would still be more or less on the county to get from kind of point A to point B, point B being on our property and point A being wherever one hundred north currently ends, the right way.
County and city.
So, we did, we did officially with a separate ordinance after this map was created, put one hundred north in. We just need to update the map.
Okay.
Um, it is in there, and I, I concur with what you just said. If, if you come in with a subdivision application, you're gonna have to comply with that and, and tying it in, um.
Yeah, so that, that southerly, um, yellow road is, would look like a four-way intersection, right?
Well, one hundred north will probably come in.
Straight through.
There's the, 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 the boundary between the city property and the county property cuts right across through here, and then it doglegs off to the left and it comes in right about here.
Okay.
So, I, I don't, I think there's enough distance between the two that it probably wouldn't be a four-way.
Okay.
But it could be a four-way into a local road section or something like that.
Yep.
At, at a minimum, it would need to, it would need to tie in with, you know, a three-way into this one or something like that.
Okay.
So, we're in the agreement, is that mentioned?
It isn't specifically mentioned in the agreement.
Oh.
That would be more in the city's engineering design standards and ordinances, just.
But you'll just acknowledge that in your planning.
Yep.
Okay.
And the, and the city would enforce that on a subdivision application.
Right.
Say, hey, this, this application needs to comply with our master plan.
All right, do any of the other council members?
Right, do any of the other council members want to talk about anything on here that we've already been through on these three? I know there have been a lot of opinions and conversations, is there anything you'd like to talk about in the, in the meeting?
I, I don't like the, the parks thing. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I'm, I'm not fond of the parks situation that they've put in.
Meaning what, just that it's been removed?
Because, yeah, because it was removed. And I think, and it's just me, I think they, it would be a really good thing to, to do something for, for the residents of the town without adding that many homes in the house, I mean, you know, in town.
Dallas, can I ask you, I know you're not at subdivision design level, um, you, you understand the concern about saying, we're just stick with city code, because city code's silent on it. And is there, is there something that your client would, would feel comfortable committing to doing and putting it in an agreement? If, if that's not desirable?
So, I think our last meeting where we kind of arbitrarily came to a number, um, and this kind of ties in with the vesting discussion, but, um, but we worked through a couple of different ways and came up with the total that was put in the agreement that was redlined. Um, and we obviously, when we first started the discussion, we had a much different-looking map and a lot of different things going on, where we've now kind of simplified it or boiled it down to, hey, mostly we're just looking at an R two zone and an R one zone. Um, in the absence of any requirements for any other projects that want to develop under R one or R two, um, where there aren't requirements for parks, our perspective is, hey, if we're just being required to, if we're requesting to develop under the R one, R two, and there's not, it's not broadly applied to all the other R one and R two projects that are proposed within Parolin, then should we be making some above and beyond contribution, um, to the parks where the city's still going to recu- or, I, I don't, recoup might not be the right word, but they're still going to gather all of the impact fees as far as parks on all the houses that are built inside of there. Um, I think the way that we, we structured it here was to say that, hey, if the city decides, and that's where the vesting thing ties in, is that the way that I understand this agreement is, if we turn in a subdivision application the day after the annexation's approved, we're vested in the ordinance for that phase, for that time, for that day. If the city decides that at some future date, whether that's three weeks or three years or thirty years, hey, we do want to put more emphasis on parks across the zones, like the R one zone, R two zone, um, then if that's done in three years and our next subdivision application that comes through after that's adopted, we would then say, hey, the city's rules have changed, we're vested under the ordinances at that time, now there's a park requirement, now we'll fulfill the requirement that's broadly applied to that zone for R one and R two. Um, I think that, kind of on our last discussion, we had talked about, we do anticipate having a stormwater basin. Those can be, um, those can be dirt holes in the ground with fences and barbed wire and not real attractive, or they can be tiered basins that are planted, that have low flow, medium flow, high flow, and parks incorporated into them. Um, I think the way our discussion went last time, the city was more inclined to not ex- further extend themselves on additional parks versus trying to kind of concentrate it at Valentine. Um, but when we went through and reviewed it and looked at the arbitrary numbers, we were just saying, hey, there's not a standard that we're being held to that's in the city's ordinances. And so, since we're, since we've simplified this to an R one, R two zone, the city's still going to collect their impact fees, but if at some future date the city determines they want to see parks based on development in those zones, then we would, we would abide by those at that time.
So, the answer's no. Not willing to commit to something in the agreement.
It was a long-winded no.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and, and.
You're like a lawyer.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to put you on a, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm not trying to insert anything from an opinion base, I'm just trying to navigate this. What, what I, what I, I express to the council is, if you, if park, if something to do with parks is important on this hundred and eight, seventy-acre annexation, the time to do it's in the annexation agreement, or, as you said, we could change our code. Of course, if a subdivision application comes through before that happens, then Phase One wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be under that, depending on the timing. Um, you know, we do not have right now, if, if, in fact, we have a subdivision that's in, in process of being reviewed, um, you know, these don't even come to the city council, and I don't want the city council to look at the administration and say, hey, why aren't you making Alex put in some parks? Because we don't have any requirement to do so. And that's, that, that is our current code. This is a larger annexation, um, our general plan does, when, on, under the subject of growth, one of its goals is to, um, to develop open space and, and parks. That doesn't translate anywhere into our code. I just want to make sure the council doesn't have an expectation or a hope, and then no tool to do it in the future. The good thing about the redlined version of this is that if you do change an ordinance, it'll apply to anything that hasn't yet been submitted. Um, the downside is, is it's not a known thing, and that's all I have to say about that. You can do whatever you want to do.
So, so Phase One, just say you, you did Phase One. Um, I just want to clarify this. So, if you do Phase One with eighty homes, say, um, then Phase Two, you'd have to submit another subdivision.
Correct.
So, we just have to get our act together and get it.
You know what, I said I was done, but I got to point out, there's one big, important clarifier difference. Typically, what we would do with an ordinance like this would require some sort of land to be set aside. When we had this conversation before, we said, rather than building some pocket parks out in there, we thought a comp- good compromise that we would then have to maintain would be, let them use that land for, for building, and the trade-off would be a cash contribution. Meaning, like, so in other words, if we do an ordinance like that, we're not going to say, you have to write the city a check for dollars, although we could, that's just a very, very, very odd ordinance. Usually, it's set aside some land for, for open space. I guess the city could sell that land and then take the money and put it into Valentine Peak. It was just thinking, while we're negotiating, rather than have requirements for that, since this is such a large area, could this be a win-win? Obviously, the, Alex doesn't think it's a win-win, and that's why it was struck. So, is this a hill we want to die on and we want to insist on? Or are we comfortable with the result of doing an ordinance that says? But you got to think, of course, and, and of course, this is, this would apply, an ordinance would apply to any subdivision, unless your ordinance says, under ten lots, it doesn't apply. But typically, what you would say is, is you would, you're going to set aside one percent, two percent, three percent, um, of, of, for open space. Typically, ordinances like that are usually for hot, more high-density. Usually, you'll say, in a, in a mixed-use, you know, commercial residential setting, we need you to set aside some open space. Or in a R three, which is a lot more dense with multifamily, smaller yards, we need you to set aside some open space. So, I don't even know where we would necessarily go if the ordinance route is the, is the way to go, but it would probably be a land dedication, not a cash contribution.
Yeah, and, and I know I've said this before, and I'll try and be brief. I'm not comfortable with setting a precedent in an agreement or bringing before the council any annexation that is predicated upon the transfer of money. So, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I have an annexation next to this, I will give you five hundred thousand dollars for your sports complex or for our librarian arts program or whatever. I, it, we should vote up or down on the ordinance without putting those types of, uh, conditions on you, and so I was glad that was struck. But in the same breath, as I've said, if they don't want to, you know, make, uh, open space and, 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 and let's just call it what it is, this is the largest annexation in the history of Parolin. This isn't, you know, hey, I want to, uh, annex twenty acres here, this is, this is huge. And so, uh, I, I know I'm telling you what you already know, but, um, if approved as presented, it would be R one, R two. They could have one phase, put in as many homes as they wanted, and there would be zero open space. And, and that's what's before the council, and you have every right to approve it or say, no, as presented in this annexation agreement, uh, nay.
Dan, I got a, did Dan leave? Oh, you're back there. I got a question, and I think I know the answer, I'm just going to ask it anyhow. Because you were saying at one time that you may get a parcel ready, you know, like the utilities and that, and then you, you might sell it off to another developer. Do I remember that correctly?
Well, there's a, so there's a couple of different ways that, that it could, that it could work. I mean, there's, there's the, the typical, I, I think the way that council would typically think of this is that Alex as the developer would come through, do, let's say, a forty-lot subdivision, go through, put in the roads and utilities, and then would have forty lots that he could sell to individuals, he could sell to builders, he could build himself. Um, but there, but it would be possible to also, we have a hundred and sixty acres, he could say, hey, I want to, a hundred and sixty acres is going to take me a long time to build it, so maybe I want to sell off ten acres of, or fifteen acres of R one to whoever.
Okay.
And so, that could, but, but I think the important part is this annexation agreement will get recorded and runs with the property through the transfers, and so, whether it's.
That's my question.
It's Alex or some other builder, it's still based upon this annexation agreement, and they still have to abide by the requirements in here. So, if we, if, if Alex was to turn around and sell it tomorrow, then the next person that comes in is still improving Two Hundred, as we talked about, City View, as we talked about, Water Tank, as we talked about, and all of that.
And that was the question I was asking, if the next buyer, if there is one, has to agree upon all of this too?
It, it would be similar to.
I was, I was pretty sure, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, it would be similar to just buying another property, and there's a power easement right through the middle of it. Just because it changes hands doesn't mean you can build your house under the power lines, you still have to abide by the easement, so.
Th- this agreement will be recorded on the deed?
Against the property.
Mm-hmm.
Not the owner.
Correct.
Good way to put it.
So, I think that if we can't say, if we can't put a dollar amount on something to go towards parks, then we've got to do something with our ordinance.
Exactly.
And I would almost say that we put a halt to this and we change that, and then we come back. Because I am not comfortable approving an annexation agreement with zero open space or zero, like, I'm not okay with that. A hundred and seventy acres of homes with no open space or, yeah, then we need to redo our ordinance if Scott says that we can't do that.
That's a third.
The residents wouldn't like it.
Size of Parolin now, presently.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
I mean, and we can expedite that, but that's, it, it would be, it would be part of our subdivision code, which recommendation would have to go through planning commission, and, I mean, you guys know.
I know, it's a long, drawn-out, stinking process.
Yep.
But that would, that would apply to this project, it would apply to every project that's developed.
Anybody else, yeah.
Every project.
Yep, it would.
Every annexation.
It would.
Well, what we're talking about doing was, would be something that would apply to our subdivision code, so any subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that's, that was our perspective in making the change, was to say that, hey, if the city determines that across the board on any subdivision, they have for the R one zone, one rate, and then for a more dense zone, a different rate, and for the highest-density zone, a higher rate, if that's how you decide to do it, then we're willing to meet whatever those requirements are at the time that those are approved. Um, but to look at this and then arbitrarily come up with a number and then say.
I don't feel like arbitrarily.
I think we need to be consistent with, and fair to everyone.
Uh, and, and that was the, and that was kind of our perspective in, in how we had, how we had approached it.
Hey, and then we have to take the long processes, working through that.
And we, and we can expedite it.
And we can do.
But it, but it takes time, you, you got to have, you got to have pl- planning commission look at it, talk through it, come up with something to present to the public, then the public hearing, then they send a recommendation, then it comes to city council, and we put it in as an ordinance format.
As a, as just a, a side idea on that, and maybe, I'm curious what Scott's opinion would be on this, but where the city, from our last discussion, said, hey, pocket parks probably aren't in our best interest, we'd rather see something going into Valentine?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if there, I don't know that I've ever seen a city do, and in lieu of, uh, some kind of improvement on site, but.
You're, you're going where my mind has been going over the last day, since we've been talking about that. Some sort of an in lieu of option, um, some sort of a value consideration at the option of the, of the developer that says, yeah, we will dedicate so much open space, or in lieu of that, the, the financial equivalent or something like that. Um, you know, the, I don't think it's, I, I think it, it looks weird as a, it almost looks like a little, let's grease the skids of this annexation by putting some money involved. That is, has never been the intent. It's like, it's like saying, you know, this is a large area, we want you to put in a firehouse, right? That doesn't seem weird at all, but what about, well, we need to expand our current firehouse, how about you help us out with it? Okay, this is how much we're going to agree on. At what point does it go from, this is a large area where we need some, we need some system-level improvements to, to a, a hush money payment, right? So, that's for that guy over in the suit to, to tell us where we're now crossing the line, but I think that.
That would be crossing the line, I think. Hush money is a bad thing.
Yes. So, so, so we could look at an ordinance that says, you're required to pu- put in X amount of, percentage of parks, or, or, or a, because, back to Alex's point, we do have a, um, an impact fee for parks, which comes from every home that gets built, and that impact fee is meant to build new parks. The reason why typically there will be an ordinance to set aside space is because, yeah, you're going to build new parks, but, or does that mean you're going to go out and acquire land, and from where? You know what I'm saying? So, so to set aside some raw space and then impact fees coming in from the homes gives the city cash to actually improve that space. And, and again, the way I asked, I wasn't trying to put you under, under the spot, I kind of was, but my, my point was, as a developer, like, wh- what does Alex want to build? What sort of a beautiful subdivision? Usually, and I get we're not at the subdivision level, but we're talking a hundred and seventy acres. Does he want to build, typically, you want to build amenities and things like that. Closer you get to a big master plan thing is, you want to really sell what you're building. Right now, that's a huge question mark, because we're just at the annexation phase, but we're saying, our code requires nothing, therefore, if we pass this, are we going to get nothing? That's the big, that's the, that's the problem we're trying to work through. So, again, the attempt wasn't to have a hush money payment, it was to have a, a good win-win compromise, but, but I guess we're going to have to work on it a little bit.
Right, hypothetically, one might expect that with a hundred and seventy-one acre annexation request, that, and I'm not a developer, so don't hold me to this, we would set aside an eight-acre park or seven acres in the center that would be a park. And then the improvement or funding or those things and maintenance could be discussed, but as presented, it is a hundred and seventy-one annexation request with zero open space.
Well, and I, I think that's, I think that's part of the, is that even, even if there were standards in place today to say, hey, R one, it requires this level of park open space, and R two requires this level of, I, I still, I think that as the city goes through, whether they want to update their ordinances or not, there needs to, especially where there's no PUDs any longer, there needs to be a discussion on, is that just a land to the city? Are there park development standards that a developer's required to develop to in order to then turn it over to the city? I mean, there's a lot that goes into what that means outside of just saying, hey, R one requires. what that means outside of just saying, hey, R one requires this much and R two requires this much and R three requires-
And we're not there yet, and so, so the options to the city would be delay the annexation until we have uh, an ordinance in place that's consistent with what you've articulated, or I would think or thought that those discussions would take place in the annexation agreement. And evidently, we've come to an impasse on that, because the response was, we want the vested, uh, ordinance in place, it doesn't require any open space, you're correct, the city certainly doesn't wanna discuss any cash transfers or money involvement at all, but rather treat you as we would any annexation request, and that is pure and consistent with the ordinance, and so as presented, it's, here's what we have. It's a hundred and seventy-one acres, R one, R two, and currently there is no discussion or language in the annexation agreement that would provide for open space, so it's before the council, everything's above board, it is what it is, unless we wanna go back to the, the bargaining table, or unless you wanna delay it until the city can put in an open space, uh, ordinance that, again, would be, would look at other cities and towns that would be fair and would be consistent with good governance, that you could comply with, you know, or not. And, and that's what I would recommend.
And that's, and I think that's where we're, on our end, we're struggling to just see what, whatever the council's trying to request from us, how do we measure that against what's gonna be broadly applied to, in the absence of standards currently in place today? If the city says, hey, we want five acres out of this for a park, is that gonna translate equally to whatever?
I think they would. I mean, we would say the next one hundred and seventy-one acre annexation request would require seven point two acres for a park. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
But the weird thing is, what about a twenty-five acre, what about a fifty acre? I just came up with that number out of the blue, since, you know, we all know it's, it's impending, but it's actually very valid. We have, we have another annexation request right on the heels of this, it, which is, which is, which is a, less than a third of the size, but does, what are we talking about? Does that scale? Do we try to apply the same thing? What? If we had an ordinance that was in place, we don't even really have to talk about this in the annexation-
Right.
-agreement. Right?
When you say expedite, um, talking about green space, what are we looking at, a month?
So, it, we would have to have an initial discussion with planning commission.
Okay.
Sometimes that takes two week, two meetings for them to wrap their mind around it, come up with what they want to put on paper, so that, then they, there has to be a public hearing, and so then the public can look at what the planning commission is thinking about, the public can give their input, and then in the same meeting as the public hearing, they can send a recommendation. So you're talking three meetings of planning commission, so that's a month and a half.
Month and a half.
And then the next city council usually will go to a work meeting and then a, so you're talking five meetings. It's usually, it's two months.
In half a month.
Expedited is two months to three months.
Okay.
Um-
So, I-
Which would, which would delay this and, and probably any other annexation that we're talking about, if it's gonna be something we're con- considering.
So as far as the vesting discussion that we started with, we've obviously been at this one for a long time, we're, we're trying to move forward. I don't know if we could make an edit to the parks, because I, what we're saying in our red line is that if the city develops standards and if the city does those, if the city makes those ordinance changes and they start it and they expedite it and it's done in two months, if that's done before we turn in our first subdivision application, then we live with it. So I don't know if there's a way to write that into, under the parks discussion, where we leave it to say vested at the time of every application, but recognizing that the city's going to-
Well, essentially the way it's written, if we move forward without pausing it, your first phase, uh, subdivision could theoretically come through without any requirement.
It could, yeah, and then you would have to look at, you would say of the hundred and seventy acres-
How, how much of that-
Whatever our first one is.
Right.
If we can, if we can beat you guys, which-
Yeah, that's-
And not to interject into the terms of the agreement, but in, on one hand, they asked for twenty years, not ten, twenty.
Yeah.
To not do any development, but now here we are saying, ooh, two months, ugh.
Well, but I guess what, that's why I, back to why I asked the question, is there something that Alex would be willing to commit to that maybe the council would then feel comfortable with, and we don't have to wait for us to do an ordinance? But just to say, you're gonna, we're gonna, your version is to follow our ordinance, we don't have one. So that's where we get in, that's what leads us to this logical train of, well, we need to pause it and then hurry and come up with one. So is there, is there another, I, I mean, I, one thing we could do is say, okay, we will work on that, and if Alex wants to come back with, hey, how about I commit to this, could then I then move forward before you get to that, I think we could go right back to wrapping this thing up.
Councilmember Harris, did you have something?
No, like, that's what I was thinking, like, give Alex a chance to make an offer, basically, how he wants to make it work.
And in the meantime, we start working on our ordinance.
Yeah, we start.
Cause we still need it for future.
Yep. We don't have anything.
I, I think, I think with that, I guess, for Alex to even make an offer, there's a lot of components that go into that. Is it, is it an acreage offer? Is it a fully improved park offer? Is it a private park? Is it a park that gets turned over to?
Well, to that, to that end, we've told you what we wanted, and that was some work on Valentine Peak. Even if it isn't a cash deal, is there something he'd be willing to installing in Valentine Peak that we'd be comfortable with? We don't get involved with a cash transaction at all and he just does something, maybe that could work, I don't know. I mean, we looked, in fact, the, the, the language is originally written, said, said improvement shall be installed by the petitioner. That's what we were calling you before your attorney wanted to say owner, not yours, your client's attorney. Said improvements could be installed by the entertainer or a cash equivalent. And, and so, I mean, it actually anticipated potentially not cash in the first place, but, I mean, if Alex said, hey, I'll throw in, you know, I'll light the, the baseball fields for you, or, you know, there's some things that we really wanna get done that I think maybe would be agreeable, but I don't know. And now I'm putting words in-
Scott, is that any different?
Those should be, those should be discussions made in the annexation agreement before we bring it to the council as opposed to trading horses for cows tonight, in my opinion. I mean, and, and once again, I, and I, Dan, you're the smartest guy I know, but I hate in lieu of, and if you do and then we do, I'd just, I would just like it to be pure with, um, they made a presentation in their annexation, and this is the open space that they are willing to, and then we can, in the annexation agreement, uh, discuss what you just said, 'cause those are very valid points. What does that mean? Do we just set aside five acres, ten acres, and then the city will develop the park within the, you know, and pay for it with the assessment, so, but those are things we need to discuss.
I think one of the things we talked about, and it's been a while, but we talked about that the city, um, the ratio of residents to green space, to open space, we actually have more open space than we have residents. I don't know if we've done the math since then to calculate the increase in residents with this new development, with this new annexation. Um, and so I think that's why that was one of our hesitations, is do we really want more parks to take care of? They're extremely expensive to take care of as a city. Um, and so I think that's when the conversation went to, well, clearly we have improvements that could happen, because Valentine Peak Sports Complex isn't even finished. And I know that we talked about at times, park impact fees can be used for certain things, but not for other things. So it's like there are aspects of the whole conversation that I think, um, got us to this point, but I also know it's probably important that that amenity looks good for this development, that that amenity doesn't look like a half-done, unfinished, unpolished, what it looks like right now, and not to discount all the work that's gone on out there, 'cause there's been a lot of work that's happened. It's just, again, here's where we are today. So I think, you know, in my mind, I'm like, okay, how much more, and, and what we talked about extensively was trail system. We were like, trail system that connects, you know, Valentine Peak to our direction heading up to Brian Head. I mean, that's one that everyone seems to love and get behind, so I keep thinking, you know, trail system is a good complement. I know when they did the annexation in Brian Head, they were building a firehouse, a public safety building as part of their annexation agreement. I don't know if you're saying that's greasing the skids or whatever, but the point is-
Scott, Scott wasn't an advisor on that deal.
Yeah, no, I was-
He would've said, don't.
So it was that we know we're impacting the community and this is what we're gonna do to offset the impact to the residents who already live here that need to have benefit of this additional population. And so, I mean, I just sit here and kinda, the idea of more parks to take care of, I mean, we have a lot of green space that we really have a lot of, of resources go in.
But Mayor, we need to take and put it in perspective to the size of this. This is a hundred and seventy-one acres.
And I understand that. So I, I understand everyone's perspective, but I'm just going back to, you know, conversations that we've had of options, if that's gonna be something, we're gonna continue this conversation about.
I just wanna inject real quick, our, we actually do have a metric to, to use if we care to. Um, Larry's back here, probably bouncing around in his seat. Um, our general plan actually has an optimal number of acreage for open space per capita, and we very much could do that math if we wanted to, because we're talking about changing the numerator and the denominator in that, in that thing. So I just wanted to say that.
Right.
So can you, can you explain that? So there's a, there's a per capita number that translates to an acreage, because if, if the city was going to, if they thought that that general plan was still applicable today and that was going to be the basis for an ordinance change applied to zones, then maybe that's how-
Yeah.
Get there?
We, we could definitely get there that way, yeah. So I'll just tell you what it is, um, so this is one statement under, um, these are mandatory elements of the general plan, is we're supposed to talk about open space and recreation. Says residences of the community as well as those visiting, enjoy the open space and recreation opportunities provided in the area. Identifying areas of potential and future needs can help protect and enhance those experiences for future generations. Then we get into, um, I think it's under chapter four, if I don't, if I remember correctly. Sorry for those getting sick by my scrolling. Okay, these are, um, goals, objectives, and strategies. It's under growth. This is not a PDF that I can do a search, sorry.
Here it is, it's in three point four five dot one. Right there. It's the one point three persons per acre. Wait, that's not the right one. It's something like that. It's a calculation of land, open land space per person.
Yeah, that's, it's not there. We're, we're getting there. Future land use and annexation, that's where I was, that's what I was talking about with the goals. Future plan use map, oh geez. If I had known I was gonna do this, I would've had it queued up. Okay, manage growth. Okay, this is under goals and strategies. Um, goal number two is to maintain community character. Perron seeks to ensure that the new development supports and enhances the consistency of an overall community character, and that it contributes in a positive way to the city's image. Uh, we maintain the character of neighborhoods, um, in the city by encouraging comparable uses and densities to existing neighborhoods and development patterns, I think we've done that. We protect areas of agricultural uses, I won't get into that. Three, preserve and, the quality and quantity of open space which gives the city its unique character. Establish trails and recreation areas that are integrated with open space. Um, and I, that's the, that's the goal that I refer to, and I know that there is a section where it talks about parks and a per capita, um, like an optimal-
Does the city have a master plan trail network?
Yes. I'm gonna have to look for this and find it. In fact, if we wanna talk about any of the other items, I can continue to look for it and then pull it up. I kinda hate waiting, have everybody wait while I scroll.
Larry, do you have memorized where it is since you helped author the general plan? Do you remember where that section is that talks about the population versus green space?
Twenty twenty-one.
He says, look under parks.
If I could scroll and find parks, I would. Okay, park and resilience, oh, that's part of the role of the general plan, okay. Environment, economic development, infrastructure. Yada, yada, here we go. Parks, trails, and recreation, so it's chapter six.
Six point two.
Now we're really getting sick. Okay.
Here it is. The general standard established by the NRPA for park acreage per one thousand people is between fifteen and seventeen acres, or one point five to one point seven acres for every one hundred people.
Yep, I knew it was there. So, well, this, at this time, says Perron currently has five parks. Total acreage for parkland in the city is currently sixty-five acres. So do the math, what is thirty-two hundred people divided by sixty-five acres? Did I say that right? I probably said it wrong. Sixty-five acres divided by thirty-two hundred. So we currently have point oh two acres for every one hundred people. No, 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 no. No, we currently have two acres for every one hundred people. 'Cause I gotta move the decimal, because it's, because it's for every one hundred. Um, so we're currently slightly above that, so if we take our current, you'd have to take the new expected people that, once it's fully built out, divided by the total number of parks. So you're, you're starting before this annexation at two, at a number of two instead of one point seven, one point five. You're gonna dilute that by the new people moving in. So again, empirically, as we look at it, we're saying, we're probably good, but we would really like to see Valentine Peak more developed. And is putting an ordinance into effect and getting, because this will build out in subdivisions in, in little phases, right, which means potentially we could end up with a piece of property and a piece of property and a piece of property and a piece of property scattered throughout this a hundred and seventy acres. I think that's incredibly inefficient, which is why I think some sort of a negotiated thing in the development agreement makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, I think the trails, the, I don't, do you have a map of the trails master plan?
Yeah.
Do any of those go through our, our parks?
I think it skirts the corner. I'll tell you, it's, I got it right here. Ooh, so we have a trail master plan, and then we have our new active transportation plan, which was just barely created. This is the new active transportation plan, which incorporated our trail plan when it was done. We got a grant from Bike Utah, and it was extensive. Sorry, more of me scrolling. So we have a multi-use path that goes out through that area and back in. And that was, the point of that was to tie in our Valentine Peak into this trail that goes up there. And we talked about it when we were talking about City View Drive, remember that?
Yeah.
That's how that ties in.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think trails are interesting too, just because you can incorporate linear park type things, but it kind of also lends itself to the same discussion of, in the absence of PUDs, is it a, is it a meandering trail that we put in and then is mowed, maintained, and weeds and by the city, but?
Which is, I think, back to this development agreement is a, is a very, very appropriate way to handle this, rather than a piece of it on subdivision one, which is entirely, um, an administrative thing, the approval of it, right? Other than, if it is on the plan, we're gonna say, whoa, you gotta comply, this section of this has to comply with that plan.
Yeah.
But it would, it seems like it'd be easier to say, is there, is there something that, that Alex could be comfortable with? And I'm really, I really like the idea of where we got to that says, let's see if, if Alex has something that he would like to propose while we hurry and work on our, our ordinance.
I like it.
I mean, he could come back next, next meeting with a proposal, which wouldn't necessarily delay it that long.
All right, this is an action item, so where are we on this? Do we have anything?
What we're trying to do is come up with final language that we could agree and schedule a public hearing. If I can just talk about the four issues. Does anybody have a problem with shifting it from ten to twenty years?
No.
No.
Um, any, any problem with the vesting language? I think that our biggest concern was rural done right. We got that handled.
Yeah.
Um, the last thing is the whole consent to transferring this to somebody else. Um, you heard Scott's advice on that. Um, what are the council's thoughts? Would you like to see that language put back in?
Yes, I would.
So, really, the only thing left is the parks and that's where, just as a, just as a summary, that's kinda where we're at.
So, of the four items, we're putting the fourth item back in and then the parks is gonna be contingent upon future discussion? Or do we, I mean, we, could we move forward with where we're at or do we need to?
Well, where we can move forward is, um, w- we're gonna start working on a parks ordinance. We're not ready to move to a, I mean, we could have the public hearing and just say, we, we'd like to hear what the public has to say on this and, but delay the vote until we have an annexation agreement that both parties are willing to move forward with. So, all we were gonna do tonight was, was kinda finalizing the language and schedule the public hearing. We could probably still schedule the public hearing, but I don't think we're at a point where we could agree on what the park language is gonna be.
But I like the idea of like what Councilmember Harris said about seeing what Alex thinks about it.
I agree.
And then if he has any thoughts or feelings, hopes, and dreams, you know, maybe he has a, an idea that we haven't thought about. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, I mean, I, I'll, I can obviously discuss this with Alex and then I, I think we can move pretty quickly on, um, on some way forward. Um, is there, so, this is the active transportation plan. Is there any, is there trails? Cause generally, active is kinda corresponds with roads. Is there trails that run through there? Cause it looks like that's.
So, the color code is blue is multi-use path.
Okay.
Purple is a cycle track, uh, the yellow is a neighborhood byway.
Okay.
And the yellow, uh, the green is a pedestrian priority zone on Main Street with this concept. So, basically, the only impact on that, on the east side of, is, is a multi-use path.
Okay. Would it be possible to schedule the public hearing and then, um, we work on getting, um, some kind of amendment? Or see, just get Alex's opinion on this and then present that prior to the public hearing at the same meeting and then have a public hearing on it? Is that possible or does, does it need to be segregated?
I think we could, I mean, really, we only have one issue left. I think we have a public hearing and tell the public we're still working through that. And if you have an opinion, share it. Get the public hearing out of the way. Then the only thing you're looking for is actual vote. The vote is gonna be adopt the annexation agreement and approve the annexation or not.
But I think we need to work on that ordinance expeditiously and I don't think it needs to take three months.
Yeah, we can, we can work on it quick. I can do a bunch of research, get it in front of the planning commission, send it to them a week early and say, "Come ready to talk." Absolutely.
And sometimes the council follows the next day after a planning and zoning.
Sometimes so. So, tonight, can we make a motion to bring it to public hearing and have that piece of this to be resolved at the, in, prior to, possibly even at the same, on the same date?
Yeah, just schedule the public hearing for, s- pu- schedule the public hearing for the next time and then we'll put the other on the agenda as, as it moves forward, yeah. Schedule the public hearing. That's all we really are gonna do.
So, we need a motion to do that then?
What date?
Say the following meeting, which is June twelfth.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing to hear, talk about the Meisner Development Agreement for June twelfth. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item thirteen. This is a discussion and decision on next steps for Prime West Development LLC annexation, LLC annexation.
So, just to catch everybody up, um, we, uh, we've had the, this is the first scheduled, um, hearing. This is by ordinance, by state ordinance. Um, we have to work our way through the annexation process. Um, and we have followed all of those steps and this is the required, um, we had the public hearing earlier today and now we have to decide next steps, um, for Prime West Development. This is fifty, approximately fifty acres. I don't remember the exact acreage count. Um, on the west end of town, uh, right against, nestled against the freeway. This has gone through all of the required steps, um, up to this point. Um, we did include, we have, um, had Planning Commission look at this. Um, Planning Commission per our annexation policy plan says that the annex, the, uh, Planning Commission needs to give a recommendation on zoning. Um, and they have done that and their recommendation on zoning was, um, exactly as, um, was recommended by the applicant, which is exactly inconsistent with our general plan. Um, and so, the, uh, Planning Commission met, they had their public hearing, they looked at it and made a positive recommendation to send that forward. Um, this is the map for the zoning. It's kind of hard to see, but basically, this crosshatch line is not a parcel boundary. That is, the recommendation on the north side of that boundary, between the freeway and that line would be R three and on the south side of that boundary would be R two. And that's what our general plan shows is high density and medium density. And that's our zones that clear, that clarify, that, um, correlate with, uh, light, our medium and, and high density. So, that's where we're at. We have a positive recommendation for Planning Commission to adopt the, to, to zone it that way if we annex it. And that's where we're at. So, the question is, is, um, we do need an annexation agreement. That's the other thing that our policy plan requires. State code doesn't require that, but our policy plan does. And it even says some of the things that need to go in there and things like water and things like that that we worked through with the, with the, uh, on the previous item, we worked through those things as well. Um, I guess the question is, is how does the, uh, parks discussion fit into this? Do we want to, um, you know, obviously, of course, we're gonna wanna make sure we're fair. Um, but the other thing is, is there was a lot of, there was a lot of public clamor on the, on the, on the large one hundred and seventy acre. Um, there was a lot of questions that were asked by the public about water and about roads and all of that stuff. And the council, the last, uh, with that one said, "We would actually like to see some studies done" and things like that. Um, this is less than a third of the acreage, um, but it is at a higher density. Um, and there are some questions, um, that need to be answered. The question is, is can they be answered during the subdivision portion? Or is there something the council would like to see for it feels comfortable knowing whether we should annex them or not? Um, and just, I can speak really quickly to that. Sewer really isn't a concern. Water, we know that there's gonna have to be some tie-ins and some looping, some, some modeling. Um, as, as far as, uh, the supply into this area is, is substandard. Um, is, is the council comfortable with handling that through the subdivision process? Or, or not requiring some modeling on the front end? Um, the oth- the only, really only other issue is, um, is traffic tie-ins. This is at the end of a dead end road that is very narrow and not very, not a road that's built very wide. So, um, we're, it, traffic, um, and probably a secondary access is gonna have to be considered. Does the council want to look at that beforehand or is, are they comfortable looking at that as a part of the subdivision process? So, that's all of the information I can give you. I don't know where you wanna go with it.
What's the difference between annexation agreement and development agreement?
They are very, very similarly related. Um, an annexation agreement is just conditions that we put on them to annex. Um, I do have the, uh, um, I ca- I can pull up the annexation policy plan. It actually, it actually says that we should be looking and addressing some of these things. Specifically, water rights is one of the things that our annexation policy plan says that we should address with an annexation agreement. You're not gonna find annexation agreement anywhere in state code. Um, but you will find it in our, in our code and our requirements and we have required those. And, and we have a template that we use and every one of them, I make sure that it, that it, that it has at least the minimal things. I mean, even the, the annexation we did for Maverick across the road, we said, "Yep, you're gonna have to comply with fire stuff. You're gonna have to bring water rights, um, you're gonna have to extend utilities as required at the time you make application." And all of those costs will be borne by the developer. So, we have a template that we use as an annexation agreement. Um, a development agreement, to further answer your question, only is something that the city would require or can require. If they're asking for something that is above and beyond, like, for example, density. If it's R one and they say, "Yeah, but we would like some additional density," then R one would give. Then we say, "Okay, well, we'll give it to you, but we're gonna require an annexation agreement so we can negotiate and we can have some offsets for that density we're gonna give you." Right? That's typically when an add, a development agreement is used. So, um, in the case of, of the, of the, of the prior one, we said, "We're gonna have an annexation agreement, but we're gonna call it more of a, it's gonna be also a hybrid development agreement." We don't have to do that in this case unless they're requesting something above and beyond. What was requested that started us down the path of development agreement with the last one was the whole zoning density restriction. That is not something that our code contemplated. And so, we said, "Okay, in order to consider that, we really gotta have a development agreement. We're gonna roll them into one document." So, hopefully, that answered your question. A development agreement is not required. An annexation agreement is.
But we asked one of the previous annexations. I think we need to be consistent and ask it of everyone because there is a density question because they're following the, uh, general plan and maybe that needs to be reviewed and re, and evaluated if that's the density that we want to approve.
But that doesn't require a dense, a development agreement to do that. You could simply accomplish that with approving a different zone or getting creative with a zone. If you wanna get creative with your zoning, start looking like master plan type stuff, you're gonna wanna development agreement to do that. If you're not comfortable with the R three, R two designation, you can simply say, "Well, this is what we'll give you with this annexation agreement." You know, we are not required to follow our general plan from a statutory standpoint.
Well, I know that.
They flirted with that, but they haven't required that yet. So, if you said, "You know what? We're gonna approve the annexation, but we wanna see R two," it doesn't take any development agreement to do that. Across the board, R two is what I mean.
What about all the other aspects? The water, the sewer, the power, the transportation?
Well.
J- uh, just a general statement on those. Where the city's recently done their master plan updates last year. When you do those studies, they're generally based on the general plan. And so, where this project, what we're proposing matches the flume.
Right.
The master plan should've been done accounting for that density.
They were. The master plan incorporated the expected densities in this area and the master plan anticipated a potential annexation at those densities.
Correct.
So, what he's saying is, is our master plan does cover this density and did plan for it.
Right, because that, uh, area out there with the Meisner did not follow the flume.
And that's why we got into the space of the development agreement.
Yeah. So, it can be accomplished with an annexation plan. Is your, the bottom line?
It's my opinion, yes.
Okay.
And where we ended up on a lot of those items with the previous one was, we have to meet the water requirement, the fire requirements of the state. We have to meet the design requirements of the sewer. And so, where the city's master plans have already accounted for this being developed at these densities, I think we're more on the specifics of an engineering design to say at a phase-by-phase basis, so.
The only thing that we don't really have solid ground to, to operate from is the traffic. And like, for example, we don't have something in code or even in our, our transportation master plan that requires certain number of access points on ingress egress. We don't have anything like that. So, if they come in with a, say this annexes and they come in with a subdivision tomorrow, I'm gonna look at it administratively and say, "One access point in and out of fifty acres with however many homes you could build, given that zoning, I'm gonna say administratively, yeah, we're gonna need to see another access." If they push back legally and say, "Prove it," we're gonna kinda be into this vague area. So, I don't know if we, we would put in our develop, in the annexation agreement. Um, before development occurs, we do wanna see two access points and just put it in the annexation agreement. Um, I think that would be wise to do because we don't have that really fully developed in our, in our code. And I think that's being pretty consistent with one of the concerns we looked at with the Meisner subdivision. We didn't have it in our code and it was a concern. It, that is probably the closest, um, like, likeness between these two significant annexations is, is really the traffic stuff. Since we're not talking of a deviation on density from our master planned stuff.
So, it sounds like we need to have a, an annexation development agreement before we annex.
Well, we need an annexation agreement and we can do that. Whether you call it a development agreement or an annexation agreement, I would say it's just an annexation agreement because we're not a, we're not asking for any sort of really deviation. But I would say, let's make sure we clarify the access in the annexation agreement. I don't think that's getting out of line to the point where we now are into the space of development agreement. I don't know what your opinion is on that.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
I mean, I already have, um, citizens that live in this subdivision just to the east saying it's dangerous because there's only one in and one out for the subdivisions that's there.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Saying, "When is the city gonna put in the, you know, the, 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 um, frontage road?" And I said, "Well, the city usually doesn't just go blazing roads through people's property, um, without really good reason and how you gonna fund it?"
So, to move forward, we need to develop an annexation agreement.
Correct.
Uh, that's what we need to make the motion tonight then.
Yep, and I, I have a template. Um, I can, I can, I can look at that template and, and see if there's any.
But we can't do that tonight.
No, but we could say, "That's the next step."
Yeah, we're, we're established and noting on the next step.
Yep.
Okay.
So, it would need, it would be the mo- the motion to.
I moved that we do, we move forward to make an annexation agreement, develop an annexation agreement for the Prime West Development.
I'll say.
For annexation.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number fourteen is the possible reconsideration of conditional use permit for the Painted Hills RV Park for longer stays in a portion of the park. So, how we, we got to this point is we've, um, had a couple of different meetings on this, um, this conditional use permit and there's been concern that the requirements of that conditional use were not met. And so, we're bringing it to council again to talk about reconsideration of that conditional use permit. So, who would like to lead this discussion?
I think Councilman Harris should.
Well, I guess it's, a couple of issues, the fact that it didn't get done in the thirty-dead timeframe. And two, the slats they put in it are absolutely, you might as well just put a screen on it. It blocks nothing. It doesn't do what I feel should be considered what they wanna call a solid fence. So, I don't, I don't know. I'm not a fan of what went down and how it happened. Um, I don't know. I think the resident is, uh, Um, I don't know, I think the resident is, uh, not being treated very fair on this.
Well, I agree, I agree about the fencing, it is, there's no privacy at all.
No. I went down and visited with the, Mr. Robinson, Jerry Robinson today. Saw him out in his yard, he was mowing his lawn, and he, I, he greeted me, did you come down to see the joke? And I said, well, I've seen it. So, we were looking out from his perspective in his yard there, you could see clear through it. There was, there, there's no privacy whatsoever from that perspective, from his perspective. And to be honest, he, a car drove by on the other side, I said, yeah, you can see that car, and he says, yeah, I can even see the tire sizes without my binoculars. That thing, there is no privacy whatsoever. There is, it, it didn't meet anything that I expected, and I don't think it's finished, if you want to know the truth, because I, my, what I voted to support was that that whole area against, that whole, the, anything that's residential was to be finished, just that section. And it hasn't been finished.
None see through.
Well, it isn't even finished, the slats aren't in all of it, the plants haven't been planted down all the way, and there's that security bracket on top for, I don't know whether it's razor or barbed wire or whatever. It's not even on, it, 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 it looks-
(cough)
It just doesn't look acceptable. It isn't acceptable, it isn't what we intended to approve, and we don't want, surely have it set as standard is what's going to happen on the whole project. But I, I feel like Councilman Harris said, that individual hasn't been represented properly. He told, he asked me, he says, well, no, he told me, he says, I don't know what council responsibilities are, but I feel the council should represent the citizen and the individual, not the developer. That hit me, because I've always tried to represent the individual, but I think we failed in this instance.
And that's why I was pushing so hard for a center block wall.
Yeah. I can see where that was the right thing, we, we fouled up. Our ordinance states that residential against commercial, whether it's, it's just commercial use, is block wall. But I was informed that there was some design agreement assi- that was signed by the previous city manager, administration, whatever, and that trumped it. I don't get that, will you explain that?
I'm not familiar with that, I-
What did it say, Mayor?
My opinion at the time was the, uh, interpretation of the code was a solid fence.
Yeah.
And I'm-
But I was told, and why I didn't push it in that ordinance is because I was told it was, there was some kind of a design agreement that was assigned and agreed upon, and we were bound to that. And it stated in there something about the fence.
It said permanent screening fence.
I'm sorry?
It said permanent screening fence.
Well, it says right on their paper, their, uh, development-
Show it to Scott and see.
I, I mean, it says the owner plans to provide required screening through a combination of a permanent solid fence and hedges. To me, that solid fence is not, well, it's not a chain link fence, so.
Well, that one, there's no privacy, I mean, that thing, you can see through it.
It's just the fact that it wasn't finished in the time it's supposed to be finished, and-
Well, I almost felt like, when I went down there and looked at it, because from inside the RV park, I couldn't see through it, but from the street, driving by, I could totally see through it, I almost felt like it was put on backwards.
I could see through both in, both sides.
I couldn't see through the RV park side, but, I mean, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Robinson told me, he says, all this fence does is fence me out.
I know, and I felt really bad about that.
Because that, whatever it is, security part, art, angles over him, you know, I guess he can't climb over it. I mean, I'm being facetious, but it, it's not, it's serious. That is not acceptable. I'm afraid we're going to set a standard, and that's what worries me, because that isn't privacy. You've got a transient, uh, situation there.
Transient business.
Yeah, transient business, and I just don't think that we've looked after the citizens.
Well, I, I know I represented on behalf of Mr. Robinson that he wanted a block fence, he wanted a block wall for privacy. There was some discussion that, oh, it might take out a tree, or it goes right along, he, he doesn't care. Take out the trees, take out whatever, he simply wants privacy by in between his residence and this commercial use. And so, then we had the discussion of what is a solid fence, and my understanding was, it had to be whatever it is we voted on, together with shrubs, is that right?
Yeah.
And then there was a timeframe set, and so if that hasn't been met, then-
One month?
No, thirty days.
You have the right, under the conditional use permit, to revoke the use under that permit and impose certain conditions, and you can impose those conditions through the mayor and the city council. Or not, but you have the power and authority.
Can I just put a friendly amendment to that statement? The conditions need to mitigate a, a problem, and the problem that we've been trying to mitigate with the conditions was, was the, was this, this visibility impact, right? We're not, we, we can't just say random conditions out of the blue, it's specifically, we're trying to mitigate something. The question is, is-
Privacy.
Did we mitigate it?
No.
Did the condition mitigate it or not?
No.
No.
Well, more discussion?
I don't know if you want to come up. I mean, I, I think the overall just comments, and I'm sure you've seen council pulling in, looking at it, you know, everyone's been checking it out, trying to kind of wrap their head around how that is a solid fence, um, and definitely finding issue with the fact that it doesn't provide any privacy at all for the resident.
So, the only thing I can go to is what this states. The conditional use permit is install a chain link fence with privacy slats. It doesn't say a hundred percent, it doesn't say anything about that, it says privacy slats. Um, and screening shrubs around the entire property. The fence needs to be installed, the fence needs to be installed behind the Robinson property within one month. Within one month, the chain link fence and the slats were installed within that month period.
I don't think it said Robinson property.
I, well, I looked-
It, it will say Robinson.
Well, it-
Yeah, I went back through it.
And I said it needs to be behind the residences. No, no, that's what I voted on. I voted on that it would be aga- all the residents within that month, that's what I voted on.
There was no three months that I knew of.
No.
There was no three months I knew of.
Well, it was said three months at first, and then it was clarified.
Yeah, I haven't seen this, and, and that was not what was voted on in that council, that night.
So, so, let me just clarify, I created that document, I created it after going back and listening word for word to the, to the thing, so-
Mm-hmm, so did I, I listened to it four times, I think.
So, we-
I listened to it also, and I said residences.
I ju- I went off of, I, I, I thought, I went off of what I heard in there, regardless, that's what we, we issued, and I tried to go word for word, I apologize if-
What I read was, what I listened to was, Rochelle made the motion for the ninety days, basically, but then changed it to the thirty due to the suggestions from Councilman Burton, and, and Downey had said-
She said thirty for the area behind the residences.
She never said to ninety for the whole thing, that I've ever, I never-
She said three months on the, on the whole thing, but she said, but behind the residences, I want thirty days.
That's not what I heard.
So, it was behind the residences.
And it said residences-
And it wasn't done anyway.
Not Mr. Robinson, or not the Robinson property, it says residences, that's what I said, I went and listened to it today.
Okay, so-
Bad part is that don't count in the motion.
We're, we're arguing over what happened and how we heard what happened. There's two matters of record, one is the minutes, I don't know what the minutes say, and two is that piece of paper. So, if I heard it wrong and I issued the thing wrong, then you need to censure your city manager for hearing it the way, differently than when you heard it, but we did give them a permit, and that permit does have standing the way it was written. Um, I did my dardest to go word for word what I heard, but the minutes would com- would, would be the official record if you want to say that it was right or wrong, and I don't know what the minutes say, because-
Does it say privacy slats in that?
It says chain link with slats.
With slats, not privacy slats.
Yeah. We di- we didn't designate a specific amount of coverage, we said chain link with slats, thinking of what we thought it was.
So, in about five years, when those hedges are big enough to blo- help block a dog from barking, then we'll get some sort of, that resident in five years might get a little noise break there, I, I, I'm pretty-
Well, I know what I voted to support, and that's what I have to stand by.
All I know is in thirty days, the whole thing, that, behind Mr. Robinson's house was not done. All the, all the bushes were, all the hedges were not put in.
It doesn't say hedges here, it says fence, and then you have three months to get the, all that-
And the hedges.
Everything done.
And the hedges.
Yeah.
Yeah, behind Mr. Robinson's house, so you're excluding hedges because of that. So, everything was supposed to be done behind his house.
That wasn't the intent, that wasn't what we-
That's not-
But, but Scott, we also said a fence for privacy.
And it's not private.
And that is not-
And I won't argue that, but when you put this out to us, it didn't say it's-
Did you stand there and talk to us and we talked to you?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and you know what we said, didn't you?
I think the issue at hand is just that the slats that are put in are not giving any sort of privacy to Mr. Robinson. That's, I think, the bottom line, right?
Yeah, not-
Well, it's part of-
Well, I mean, it's part of it, but, and you would have to, I don't know, I can't put words in your mouth, but when I drove by, I could see directly through the fence going into the park, there was like no privacy. I mean, when I did make the motion, and I'm sorry that I screwed it up, apparently, um, I should have said privacy slats. I guess I just assumed that putting slats in there would cr- create privacy.
There, again, if you look online, there's a bunch of different privacy slats. It's a matter of, we just made an assumption, made an ass out of us and whatever else, but it's a matter of, we want eighty-five percent, so those are eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent obscured.
They're not, well-
That's what, that's what we, that's what we-
Okay, that's what they say probably on the box, I, they're not eighty-five percent obscured.
Well, that, that's, I'm saying, that's what we looked at. Now, one thing about the fence, tell me why, you know, we put it five feet with inside our property line, okay? So, we want it to be our fence and not have to worry about anything else.
Right.
So, that's why we put it five feet with inside our line, so that weed will take care of that. The property that's behind that five feet, that's what we'll take care of, taking care of all the weeds, taking care of everything that's in that area, we'll do that. Now, personally, I told Mr. Robinson, personally, myself, I told him that I would remove his fence along the backyard, okay? I told him I'd do that myself. The park didn't have anything to do with that, I just told him I'd be happy to help him to get rid of that, since it's basically all fallen down anyway. But as far as what we feel, not what we feel, what I feel, I went right by this. The fence was up within thirty days. I mean, I've got plenty of witnesses stating that it was. Do we want to put the barbed wire on top, I don't know if we do or not.
So, you're going to leave it unfinished, like that?
No, we can put caps on it, we can put barbed wire on it, I, the, the reason I left that-
It's not even six foot on slats, that's all that matters.
The reason that I left that is because when we get down to the storage unit, they wanted better protection. They want barbed wire, they want people that, so that nobody can climb in and get into their storage units. So, we're trying to think of what would work best for them and work best for everybody else. We can take those off and put regular caps on them and make them more attractive for the residential area, that's not a problem. We just put that on there to have the fence be done.
So, Councilman Harris, was it finished in thirty days?
We finished it last Saturday, which was in the thirty day time limit.
The fence?
Yeah.
The whole-
What we re- I had just-
Well, we've never actually seen how Dan wrote this thing up, so I wouldn't, wouldn't mind seeing that.
Yeah, put it up on the screen, no, I'll put it up on the screen.
Hey, Dan, does the conditional use permit say anything about the shrubs, um?
I'll just, I'll just read it.
Okay.
So, the conditions, the applicant is allowed to operate thirty percent of the rentable spaces of the park as conditionally allowed in yada, yada, length of stay. That was just referencing that they're allowed to d- to get the longer stay. Conditions of approval, install a chain link fence with privacy slats and screening shrubs around the entire property. The fence need to be installed behind the Robinson property with that, with that number, within a month, and around phase one of the park that is being developed within three months. The rest of the fence and shrubs need to be installed as the park is built. Nothing in this conditional use permit negates or replaces the original conditional use permit for the park. This condition is in addition to the original conditional use permit.
Well, it does say privacy slats, and it does say shrubs around the entire property, which you do not have.
Within three months.
Oh, the entire property, the part that is with phase one.
This says that the slot, fence and slats and shrubs around the entire property. The fence needs to be installed behind the Robinson property within a month, and that was the language that was used, and around phase one of the park that is developed within three months, that was the timing. The rest of the fence and shrubs needs to be installed as the park is built. So, I should have put fence and shrubs, I was hyper focused on listening to the language in there about Robertson property and what was within a month and what was in three months, and I missed fence and shrubs. Um, I believe the fence was in, within-
And I don't think it was-
They're not privacy slats.
Rochelle's motion-
I don't know about the slats.
They're not privacy slats, yeah.
For three months involved the Robins, I said, mentioned Robinson, but when we talked about the one month, the thirty days, it was property owners, or residences is what it said.
My intention, apparently it wasn't, anyway, was to replace the three months with the one month.
Right, after the discussion.
Which is what I took it as.
That's how it was meant, obviously, that's not how it was perceived, I'm sorry.
But I listened to it, and I said residences twice.
Right.
But what was in the motion was what I put on this, because the motion is what passed.
Yeah, that's not what I supported.
And, and I think that's, that's, I think that's common where sometimes you'll have, because what happened is we had a motion, and then a bunch of discussion, and I was like, well, can we clarify timelines, and then she clarified the timeline, and then we got through, and then we voted. So, it was a really messy motion, discussion, vote. And I totally believe you, when you say that, Councilman Burton, your intent was to do this, and Councilman Harris, your intent was to do that.
Well, my intent was for this not to happen at all, it's supposed to be centered on-
Yeah.
Can I ask you, about the shrubs, what's the definition, isn't the shrubs supposed to be part of the, um-
Screen?
Screening?
Yeah.
I, I, I-
And, and we discussed that they would, they would be, they would grow in, I remember talking about that, right?
Yeah, but, but did you s- have you looked at them?
Yeah, I've seen, no, I've seen a picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know.
But we didn't-
I, I just, it's a rough one, because, you know, I'll probably be six feet down before they're six feet up.
But we didn't-
Maybe, maybe we-
Specify a size.
Cable it and- Well, there's supposed to be a screen up to six feet. The shrubs supposed to be, be, the shrubs are supposed to be part of the screen, put aside the fence, let's talk about- Well, there's supposed to be a screen up to six feet. The shrubs supposed to be, be, the shrubs are supposed to be part of the screen. Put aside the fence. Let's talk about shrubs. 'Cause these shrubs, first, do you have drip lines or any, any water going to them, or do you just water them by hand?
We are, we have, we are putting water to them.
Okay. But how long will it take these shrubs to be a screen for your park?
I can't answer that. My son's the one that picked them. He picked very fast growing, very pretty, very big-
Well, bamboo, bamboo grows pretty fast, but I, I'm not sure about these shrubs being six feet in three months.
Well, if you-
That's, that's what I'm saying. It says right here that, you know, the rest of the property ha- privacy slats, screening shrubs, screening shrubs. Um, I, I can't see any vision of these shrubs that are this big being a screen for that property.
One, I don't think your size is quite accurate. They are bigger, they are bigger ones.
I have a picture.
You can have a picture if you want. You can get a tape measure, and then I'll believe it.
This big?
But a whole lot of fingers. I think they're a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, well, let's do a foot.
But you have to probably be about that.
Okay, one foot.
But the thing of it is, I don't know how long it's gonna take. I'm not, I, you know, we put good fertilizer in, we did whatever, we got plants that are supposed to grow fast. We want it to take care of itself.
Okay.
It, it was discussed at the last city council, and city manager looked it up and said, was it five to six years, Dan?
Well, and that was depending on the, the scale of the breed and all that.
Yeah. And those are a lot cheaper to buy than, than the other ones, so that was, that was said properly, though.
What were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think, again, to state the obvious, the, the developers have pushed and negotiated and held the city to, um, technicalities and, and the intent was to provide privacy to the landowners. And, and maybe it is, we tabled this, and, I mean, if we're gonna get technical, uh, install a chain link fence with privacy slats and screening shrubs around the entire, uh, property, and then we talk about the installation with respect to Mr. Robinson. Uh, I, I'm not a privacy slot expert, but if somebody put a one inch screen through it and called that a privi- it, it, it would appear as though whatever these slats are, they're not providing the privacy. So I think that's something that the city can look at, and I know you said you bought them, and it says eighty-five percent, and maybe it may need to be a hundred percent slats, because they're not producing what was the intent of the council. I mean, I don't know, it's, it's a mess. I think we had this debate earlier, that it was a solid fence, and you argued a chain link fence with slats is a solid fence. I told you that my interpretation of the, of the ordinance was otherwise, that it's not a solid fence. To me, and I'm from Paiute County, means you can't see through it. And now here we are, and you have a chain link fence with slats, and it's h- it looks like people can see through it. And so I don't know, what's your position there? Do you think that you've met, uh, honestly, the spirit of what the council had in mind, and Mr. Robinson had in mind, and others?
I, I, I don't have an answer to that. I mean, I-
Do you think it's a solid fence, given the, I think you made a powerful argument, that with the chain link and these privacy slats, it'll, it's a solid fence?
Well, if you look at the definition of a solid fence, in, in the dictionary, a chain link fence is considered a solid fence.
Okay, since you brought that up, I'm gonna read it to you, 'cause I looked it up today.
Okay.
That's not true.
Well, it's-
And, let me get it here. It's hard with only one hand.
It's mine.
You can read it. Okay. Screen fencing, also known as privacy fencing, refers to a material used to cover or partially conceal a fence. These screens are primarily used to block visibility, providing privacy and security while allowing outdoor spaces to be enjoyed. Y- yours doesn't block the views. There's no privacy on either side. They can see him, and he can see what's going on in there.
Does it say anything about noise?
No.
'Cause this obviously doesn't do anything about noise either.
Screen fencing offers a visual barrier, blocking the view of those outside of the fenced area.
Yeah, it doesn't.
And it fails.
Yeah, it doesn't. Have you gone and stood in Mr. Robinson's driveway and looked, and what do, what do you see?
You can see through it. I'm asking the question that you can.
Yeah. I didn't even, if you wanna know the truth, when I fir- he was mowing his lawn, and I pulled up there, I didn't even think he'd put the slats in, 'cause I could see right through it. Looked like just, it was just chain link.
I mean, the word to me, privacy is pretty strong, because when I think of privacy, I definitely think of people not being able to see each other through the fence. And I, I feel like that word being in this document is strong.
So I guess, I guess the thing with it is, is left interpretation. And I guess it should've been where there wasn't the interpretation left, so, I don't know.
Well, I think we had a- And it shouldn't matter, but he's a really nice man.
He is, he's a great-
And I think, uh, that was communicated to you, and we had this long discussion about, oh, we're gonna have to take out a tree, and it's gonna go right along. He doesn't care about that. And so, so you prevailed on that point.
No, 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 down Dan is the one that said that if that's the city road, he does not want that fence there. He's the one that made that comment.
Well, I've spoken to him, and I just spoke to his brother tonight, and he wants peace, and he doesn't wanna be at the center of any of this. He's a really nice person. And so what I thought you would do, honestly, is take care of him, whatever it took, whether it's a twenty foot wall made of cinder block, and I don't know that we'd be here, but you didn't do that. You did the very minimum amount you could do, and here he is, looking through into your property, and you, and people in there are looking through to his property, and I don't know. I, I don't think that was the intent, the instru- or the instructions that were given with respect to the conditional use. Maybe you disagreed. Maybe you didn't come away thinking that his privacy really mattered. And, and it, I, I, I don't think a reasonable woman or a reasonable man could go to his property or go to your property and say that there's privacy. That's a privacy fence. Would you agree or disagree with that?
I don't wanna play dumb or whatever, but it's just a matter of, I, I just went off of what was on the paper.
I have a question. Uh, you know, he expressed a concern about the disturbance when the trash is picked up. And you move the cans, but you fence the area out for the cans.
We fence, we fence our property. What do you mean?
Yeah, I know, but you left that area where the can, the trash cans fit, like you're gonna put them back there?
Don't we just put a fence around it? It's got concrete there. We can use something with it down the road. It doesn't matter what it is.
Okay, I just was curious, because that was a concern he had.
Well, and I'll put the cans back there.
Okay.
Although we'd move them.
Okay.
Which we did.
Thank you.
So we have a couple options. We could table it. We could put a condition that actually creates privacy, which is in writing as part of the conditional approval. I think anyone could, I mean, anyone could look at it, and I would doubt they would say that was privacy slats. I mean, we all were, we all looked at it. We all were surprised, I think is a fair term. And so I feel like we could do one of those two things. We could require true privacy, or we could evoke, saying there isn't true privacy, or we could table this and talk to legal and otherwise and try to figure out our next steps.
I think we oughta table it, just for the fact, we should've tabled this before, and it may not have gotten to this point, but we didn't, we're where we are. So I think we should table it and try to figure this out right, with all involved. Mr. Robinson, these guys, the, anybody that's, has anything to do with this. And see if we can't come to some consensus of resolve.
Is that a motion to table it, or, or is it-
I make a motion to table this.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're gonna table for future discussion and council. All right, the next portion of our meeting is going to require that we are discussing, um, the character professional competence, physical, mental health of an individual. So we are gonna have to step into close. Those of you who are here, it's, we're not gonna be long. Um, this is just because it is a character thing that we need to talk about. Um, so I need a motion and a roll call vote to move into closed session.
Mayor, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss the character professional competence or physical, mental health of an individual.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, my roll call, starting with Councilmember Burton?
David Burton, aye.
Sharon Danny, aye.
John D., aye.
David Harris, aye.
Rochelle Toppin, aye.
We will come back and continue to transact business if people wanna wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, here, let me have a kid. No, yeah, you want me to-
I know, huh? I'm not, no, we can't, right, anybody?
I'll try.
I tried to-
No, but I'm holding on.
Yeah.
Close session. Oh, okay.
He's what? He's who?
Oh, okay, I, I, yeah.
Who is he?
Oh, okay. Knock in. David can come in late.
Ah, okay, well, should we resume without David?
Yeah, let's resume. He'll be back in.
These are, um, all vote ones. Okay, we need to call our Parowan City Council meeting back to order after a closed session, back into our, um, public meeting, and it is nine oh one P M. I'm waiting for Councilmember Burton, because we have to vote on these things.
Don't worry, that's- Dumb to her.
Do we have another closed session? Do we have another one? Okay. All right, so moving on in our agenda to item number sixteen, this is awarding the R F P for the engineering design for the upcoming division of drinking water projects. Um, so we did put those out for R F Ps. We did receive four different bids, and based on-
No, on that one, we received two.
Oh, we received two. Why did I think we had four?
We had four on a, there's so many different projects. We had four, we had four on, on, on the, uh, E D A grant application, so this was, just had two.
All right, so based on the evaluation criteria and scoring, um, the award on that is proposed to be, now remind me, because we just talked about all the different acronyms.
Bowen Collins Association.
Okay, so that one's Bowen Collins. So I need a motion to approve Bowen Collins for-
Mayor, I'll make a motion to award Bowen Collins for number sixteen, engineering design of upcoming division of drinking water projects.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. The next one is the bid for the contractor for the re-roof of the Old Rock Church. And the product that we are proposing to use is the Cedar product. It's called S C E D U R. It's a fifty year warranty product. It's, uh, highly recommended. It's been used on projects of this nature for historic preservation, and the most important part about it is, is it's gonna last a very, very long time. And the bid we would like to award to, um, Stout Roofing. They were the lowest bid, but most importantly, they have experience with that product and have, uh, work that they and could show us that they used that product recently and did an excellent job, and came with excellent references, and they were the lowest bid. So we need to have a, a motion to approve Stout Roofing for the Old Rock Church.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for contractor to re-roof the Old Rock Church as Stout Roofing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. The next one is awarding the R F P for engineering for the E D A grant application and design of the airport loop road project. And that award, based on, again, criteria and scoring, would be for, um, Jones and DeMille. And so I'm motion to approve Jones and DeMille for the E D A grant application and design of the airport loop road project.
Mayor, I'll move to approve Jones and, uh, award Jones and DeMille, um, for engineering for E D A grant application and design of airport loop road project.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item nineteen is awarding the bid for the contractor for the recharge project, um, just the pipeline portion. And again, based on the criteria and evaluation and scoring, that award would go to-
No, this would be based on qualified low bid.
Oh, qualified low bid.
Yeah, that's qualified low bid. Mayor, I make the motion to approve J P excavation, is that correct?
Yep.
For the, as the bid, giving them, awarding the bid for contractor for the recharge project.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And that finalizes our action agenda. Okay, moving now into the work agenda, we did skip item number twenty. It's being moved to the next meeting, which was the Legacy B Estates P U D. Um, item number twenty-one is the presentation on the salary study. There's just one. Oh, that was-
Okay. So as everybody is aware, we have been in the process of, of looking at our, thank you.
Scott, did you give one?
Yes.
Open the wrong-
Thank you.
The wrong presentation. Sorry, let me grab the right one. Let's get rid of that. Horrible thing while I wait for my computer that's being on. Horrible thing while I wait for my computer that's being on. I figured. Okay, all right.
Mayor Foldo, what's his name?
All right, here's the right presentation.
Climbing that peak.
So, um, we have been working on our salary structure, uh, for Parowan. Um, this has been a process that's, that's gone for, um, gosh, we've been at it since the fall. Um, we developed the framework, we had Jennifer Bradbury come and help us and we established the fr- framework, we established the, the RISE program of, that we would have a, things like that, this is the continuation and the fulfillment of that. Okay, why we're here, our human capital is our largest line item expense and our biggest asset. Employees are the most critical part of keeping Parowan running well. Um, I wanna emphasize that as we start, um, depending on the type of organization or type of business, there's, there's certain things that are important. Almost everything we do is, is service oriented, um, public safety, what, what do you have, if you don't have your guys in blue? Fire, what hap- what do, I mean, i- in other words, what we do is our people, right? That's why it's so important. Um, water, power, sewer, roads, airport, they're only as good as your operators are and then of course, your infrastructure is more important, is, is, is more important than in other types of departments, um, for utilities, but you are equally reliant upon your people. Everything else, parks, recreation, pool, library, theater, visitor center, community events, economic development, cemetery, what, one of those things is not absolutely critical of, of our people, right? That's why we're here. To keep Parowan City running well, we need to attract and keep good people. That is the overall goal, is to do those two things. Whenever we have a job opening, come open, we wanna attract good talent and we wanna keep the good talent that we have. Um, our new salary plan and structure helps us to do that without raising taxes. I just wanna get that out of the way early, in case people are thinking that that's where this is going, it isn't. So, rather than hire a company to come in and do a eighty thousand dollar salary study and present results to us, we did it in-house, but we're still presenting the results. What the study showed is that nearly all of our positions are underpaid compared to similar and regional cities. Management positions had the highest degree of disparity and there were a few positions that were actually very close to parity to start with. That, those were the exception, not the rule. And those that I noticed that were closest are positions that we had recently been working on or had just recently hired or something like that. I, I'm not going to be getting into specific individuals in this presentation and if that's what you're hoping for, you're not gonna get it. But just as an example, we hired recently a police officer to come in from another agency and we needed to, without the salary study done, we needed to try to establish what was a fair wage, given the experience and all of that. So, I was happy to look at that and see, yeah, actually, we were pretty good, um, as Addie and I kinda worked with that to try to come up with the best wage and, and working with Kelly. So that was an example of a position that was close to parity to start with. Most of our older positions were not at that. What we have learned through very painful experiences is that we are losing employees to mostly regional employers. We lose cops to, to Bryanhead, we lose other people to other regional employers. We rarely lose somebody to the Wasatch front, but we do lose them to Cedar City, Enoch, Bryanhead and so forth. Uh, as we know, replacing employees is costly and service quality suffers. You lose a lot of institutional knowledge when you have turnover. There's a certain degree of healthy turnover in the HR world, they'll tell you, it's usually around the like, seven to eight percent a year or something like that. Our goal is not to have turnover, our goal is to retain good quality people and hire good quality people, but sometimes people will move on. My point there being, our goal is not to have zero turnover. If somebody can better themselves by moving on, we were paying them a fair wage and they still can better themselves. For example, if we have a, a Patrol Two police officer here and he has the opportunity to go and become a, a sergeant at the Sheriff's Department, we're paying him a fair wage at Patrol Two, you know, if they wanna go be a sergeant there, we don't have a sergeant position open. That's an oper- that's an example where we hate to see them go, but turnover isn't necessarily just related to our wage being wrong. We don't wanna lose good people because our wage was wrong, but we understand we will sometimes lose people, right? I just wanna clarify the difference on turnover there. Um, another thing we've learned through painful experience is that new employees are much harder to find housing for in Parowan. Almost without fail, every new employee that we hire, they are gonna live in Cedar or Enoch because they can't find affordable housing in Parowan. It's a challenge. So, assumptions in the study, these are key because they are some of the underlying factors that went into how we applied comparable data and so forth. First, first assumption, cost of living in Parowan is no longer cheaper than anywhere in the state. In fact, it is more expensive from a housing perspective relative to, like I just mentioned, Enoch, um, some of the places out in the county. Um, there was a time when it was cheaper to live in Parowan and we could pay a lower wage because it was cheaper. What part of the cost of living is cheaper is the question and the assumption is, is that, that is, that is a thing of the past. Um, two, there's a non-monetary benefit to living in Parowan versus the Wasatch front, which offsets assumption number one to some degree. Meaning, there, you could not, if you gave me twenty thousand dollars a year more to work on the Wasatch front, I'm still gonna say no, right? So that is a factor, right? Benefits, we've heard a lot about benefits and that we need to take them into account, this is another assumption. All of the comparable cities in the study have benefits very similar to Parowan. Now you can argue, this benefit is slightly better here, that benefit is slightly worse there. There's some cities that offer a tuition benefit, we don't offer a tuition benefit. Generally speaking, Parowan has really good benefits. Um, however, the comparable data that we used, that we looked at, on average, was a year old, which means two COLA enhancements old, when we're talking about comparing to next year's wages, 'cause that's what we're budgeting for, is, is next year's wages. So, we're going to say, if Parowan has slightly better benefits than the comparables, it is offset by the fact that the comparables have older data. We're making the assumption that those two offset each other. Maybe that's a good assumption, maybe it isn't, but that was the assumption used. The final assumption is regional cities are our biggest competition. For example, you can live in Parowan and work in Cedar City or Enoch or Hurrican or Bryanhead. Meaning, if we're gonna lose employees, they don't have to move from Parowan to chase a higher salary. They can stay in their home in Parowan and go to work for Enoch City. So that is why our regional comparisons are the most important and really the focus of our study. If there are reasonable, regional comparable jobs. Some jobs, there's tons of regional comparables, other jobs, there's hardly any. You know, Enoch City, Bryanhead City, um, a lot of these cities, they don't have an airport, you know, they don't have a pool. So we can't compare lifeguards to Enoch, we have to go outside of the region to get, to get comparables on lifeguards, right? But the default, we're gonna look regionally first, that's the important part of what I'm saying. Our goal was to align Parowan wages with the regional market. Secondary, we wanna create a clear, fair path for employee growth. We want employees to know what their career path will be if they stay at Parowan. When there's ambiguity there, you have anxious employees, they will jump somewhere if they have, feel like it's more secure somewhere or something like that. Another big, important goal of this council was they wanted to reward high performance and long-term service, right? We wanted to incentivize the star performers and disincentivize those that are just, maybe just skating by, right? So we did the hybrid, which was an incentive coupled with, uh, with the, um, the step and grade tenure path and I'll explain more about that. We wanted to do all of this within our existing budget constraints. So again, our goal is to be average in the regional market. Some cities have a goal to be a hundred and ten percent because they wanna get the top talent. Well, but you have to be able to afford a hundred and ten percent and, and affordability was a huge factor, so it was one of our, one of our goals. Okay, so the new structure is a hybrid system I talked about. First of all, the step and grade, this provides predictable tenure-based annual increases. However, it is not exclusively a step and grade, one of the things that people hate about step and grade is it disincentivizes people to excel and be great because you're gonna pay them the exact same as the guy who's just, or gal, who's just riding equal. So in order to balance the budget impacts of the step and grade, we did a very shallow slope on the steps. In other words, your raises won't come solely from the fact that you've been here one extra year with a pulse. It'll be a portion of it, but it's gonna be a much, it's gonna be a smaller portion than if it was just exclusively step and grade. The other half of it, which is where the rest of kind of that increase will come from, is gonna be an annual merit-based bonus. This is gonna replace Christmas bonuses, in the past, we've had Christmas bonuses that have been flat. Now, that's step and grade and then we'll have an incentive program, that incentive program will reset every single year. Um, it is gonna be based and reward proficiency, training and innovation, which leads to efficiencies, right? We wanna incentivize the very things that help the city to thrive and be successful and to avoid budget increases in the future. In other words, Jeremy's sitting out in the audience, if Jeremy comes to the city and says, hey, I found a way that I can save us money or I've found a way that I can give efficiencies that'll give my guys more time, that's, that much longer until we have to hire that incrementally new employee, right? So if we incentivize our employees to do the things that the city wants, we're actually now in alignment with our employees versus at cross purposes, right? That's the idea of the performance-based incentives, so new structure, hybrid system, both of those things. This is why it works, employees know there's a plan they can count on, star performers are rewarded, star performers are rewarded, efficiencies help the budget to stay balanced and turnover falls and service quality improves, right? So this is a smart structure that saves us money in the long run by making our team stronger. That sounds like a tagline, didn't mean to be cheesy. What it costs, the full, the full adjustment is, we are planning on doing the full adjustment in this year, in this budget, meaning, starting July one. No tax increase required, I said that earlier. This is gonna be funded through operational savings, prioritization of tw- of, of financial year twenty-six budget requests. We've been very frugal in approving budget requests this year. We haven't, uh, incre- we haven't, uh, the way the budget, and the budget, by the way, will be, will be out for the public to inspect, um, the first of next week. Um, we have been very, very, very frugal in not a- adding any additional employees, we've been very frugal in the approval of capital requests so that we didn't have to do a phased approach on this thing. Phased approach on this, on, on something like this can be challenging, it can be frustrating for your employees, they can say, yeah, they're gonna give us part now, but they're never gonna do the second half or the third part of three or whatever. So really, by prioritization of the budget is how we're funding this, um, this year, um, through things as, with new growth and, and other savings. The total cost is approximately three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. That's added operational cost. That's, that's a big number, this is why we had to be so frugal in our budget prioritization this year. The way that splits up, fifty-seven percent of that will impact the general fund, eight percent water fund, nine percent sewer fund, twenty percent power fund, two percent trash, four percent irrigation. What happens if we do nothing? We have ongoing loss of talent and institutional knowledge. I don't want to be a fear monger, but I am more worried about that as we move forward. Um, I worry about what we're paying, for example, Public Works. We used to have a huge advantage on benefits. Um, you can start brand new for Sunrock, driving a cement truck and you're gonna start at Parowan making less with benefits that are equivalent to maybe, maybe better, maybe worse. Um, Sunrock doing that, they provide full benefits, medical, dental, vision, retirement and tuition. You can start at twenty-two, fifty-something an hour, we're paying some of our guys less than that that have been here for fifteen years. So, my fear is that we're gonna start losing key, key talent there. Um, I, I worry about, in our power department, um, it was always, we had a huge advantage over the private power companies because of our benefits. Well, in tier one, we still do, but as we're hiring new guys, they're coming in at tier two and there isn't the same advantages there. So we've gotta get closer to parity there. Um, turnover costs are high, if we don't, if we, obviously, we know that. Um, lower service quality and community satisfaction when we're resetting from brand new and we're, we're trying to learn and get up to speed quickly. Um, those hidden costs grow larger over time. This is my last slide. Dead serious. What's next? We are going to, um, adopt and begin, begin using the new structure this year, twenty twenty-five, July, which is the starting of the financial year twenty-six budget, fiscal year twenty-six budget. We need to train supervisors on the evaluation process that we started with the RISE program and incentive tracking. Plan on doing that in June and then performing those ev- employee evaluations in June. Again, that incentive bonus, that incentive payment is based on what is budgeted divided by the number of employees. Um, knowing how big of a bite of the apple we were gonna have to take on the adjustments this year, we have set that incentive bonus at three hundred dollars this year. That's the max. We will go through the, uh, the, the RISE program and, uh, the, the employee evaluations by their supervisors and the committee to make awards. Just for relatively speaking, in the past, we've done a Christmas bonus of a hundred dollars per employee, so we're bumping that up to three hundred. I think the intention was always that we were gonna do a little bit more than three hundred, but this year, we are biting off a huge chunk on wages and so, in the, in the interest of being frugal, that's, that, that employ- that incentive bonus, the max will be three hundred. Um, that's, that's just what we're putting in the budget this year. And then, after that's all said and done, we'll monitor turnover and performance outcomes. Again, we'll look to tweak our program and see, does, is the RISE program doing what we want it to do? Are we happy with it? How do the employees feel about it? How's it working? And, um, that's it. As you can see, I didn't get into job-specific because, um, now we're kinda getting into the employee privacy. I will remind the public that you can go to the transparency website to get information. As a part of our new budget pro- process, thanks to the legislature, we will have a public hearing on the municipal executive officers' increases. That won't be every single member, I mean, employee, but it's a fair swath of them. It's, it's the, uh, it's the appointed, it's the city manager, the attorney and it's your department heads that, that we will have a public hearing to see how it impacts them. Um, and, um, I just wanna seal this with, um, these things are very hard. Anytime you look at this, there's always a million fairness arguments. To some people, fair is you give everybody the exact same raise. To some people, fair is you pay them what, what the job pays based on the comparables. And to some people, fair is that everybody gets something. Um, and so hopefully, I can tell you that more than a hundred man-hours have been spent on this. Um, we have gone into extreme detail with the, with the salary committee members, um, which was Dave Burton and Sharon. Um, didn't, didn't spend a lot of time, um, with a formal committee, but just because of timing and trying to get everybody together, but we did go into extreme detail with the entire council because we needed the entire council to understand this because this is the system we're gonna use moving forward. The only time, the only way we'll really tweak this will be COLA adjustments. And, and COLA adjustments move the entire matrix. Um, we will have a step and grade matrix available that will, just like the federal. It will, just like the federal government does it, this job is a grade four, this job is a grade sixteen. When we, when we list positions for hire, we will say that it is a grade fifteen, is what that job is. Meaning, you come in with zero experience at that job, you're gonna start at step one of grade fifteen. Anybody who is interested in applying for a job will have a very good picture of suite. Fifteen is what I, step one on grade fifteen is what that job starts at. Oh, and by the way, if I hang around for ten years, I'm gonna be ten steps in, and that's where I'll get paid. And if I happen to climb the ladder and go from, in the police world, patrol one to patrol two, I will go from grade fifteen, or whatever it is, to a grade seventeen. And at that point, you're motivating them to not only have a pulse, but also to wanna follow the incentive program, but also, I'm gonna wanna get all the certifications and experience required to go from patrol one to patrol two. We make a very clear path for our employees, I think that's vital. It also means that all of our employees will see what everybody else, what positions that grade is at. It'll be transparency to the public, it'll also be transparency within the organization. Sometimes, I think the phrase that is used is comparison is the thief of joy. You'll have, you'll have somebody say, "Well, wait a minute, my job, I think my job is just as important as that job, and they're at a grade sixteen, and I'm at a grade fourteen." Well, we have set the grades and set the ranges based on comparable data using, um, like I said, regional cities and comparable jobs. When we had to go outside of regional cities, first, we went to cities of a similar population across the state and stayed out of the WASatch front. And the next step was to go to similar jobs. And then the final step, if there was only a few comparisons, was to actually use the WASatch front. That happened very, very, very rarely. I think the only time we really got into that was like lifeguards, where there's just not that many municipalities that operate a municipal pool. And there was a couple of other small jobs, we got into those for comparisons. I feel really good about the study. I really am grateful to the council who put a lot of time and a lot of thought and is backing this. I think it'll mean a ton to our employees to know that their wage has been looked at very hard and that we're investing in our employees. I love the fact that we're doing this without a tax increase, and that we have a good system that we can use going forward, so we don't have to spin our wheels. We don't have the squeaky wheel gets the grease. We just have a good system that we can point back to.
Thank you.
The end.
So, I wanted to ask, because it's been a while since we went through the RISE program. Does anyone remember what RISE is an acronym for? We can leave if you can.
Whoa.
Hold on.
What is it? Do you know?
I do, I know.
Well, let's say it.
It's, does anyone know?
No.
Really?
We don't remember?
I don't remember.
It's review, incentive, step-in-grade evaluation. So, it covers everything that the program does, because that was so critical. You know, the employees wanted this, the genesis of this was the request from employees saying, "This should be looked at, it hasn't been looked at, it needs to be looked at." So, I feel, I echo what Dan said. I feel really good about what's gone into this, that everyone's put a tremendous amount of effort and time into it. It's been a long time coming, and we're looking forward to rolling, rolling it out, getting everyone trained on it, doing the evaluations, and moving forward with a plan that's sustainable and will sustain the city.
So, I guess the question that I have for the council is, I have, I'm sure, a bunch of employees that are like, "How does this affect me?" And, um, I have, I have all of the numbers built into all the budgets, and, and it's, it's, it's a pretty complex process, you know? Almost, a lot of the employees are split between all these different departments based on, you know, how, the proportionality of time they spend on these things. So, I have the results of the program fully integrated into the budget. We're gonna, we're gonna propose the budget, and we will adopt the budget the first of June. Should I wait until after that point to sit down with the supervisors and go through that, and, and, and sit down with all the employees when the budget is adopted? Or, should we start that process now? I don't wanna start all that process now unless, unless if there's a chance that the budget isn't gonna be adopted, or we're gonna, or we're gonna have some debate and maybe change it or something like that. You see what I'm saying? We have a, we have a short window of time to go through the evaluations, and, and we can start going through the evaluations now, and I guarantee you, every single employee's gonna be like, "Okay, yeah, all right, yep, I need to do better at this, and, and I'm really good at that, and yeah, I guess I need to, you know, calling sick so often," whatever it is. And they're gonna say, "What is, what is the result of this program?" I would love to be able to sit down with them at that time, and, as some of the council have said, review their total compensation. This is what you were paid hourly, this is what you will now be paid hourly, this is why. Here's your grade, here's your steps, and this is the value of your health insurance. This is the value of the vision, the dental, the retirement. I wanna be able to give them a piece of paper that says, "You may only see after taxes fifty thousand a year, but you cost the city ninety-three thousand a year in cash." And if you were to compare that to the private sector, or if you were to go on your own as a contractor that doesn't have these benefits, you know, I wanna be able to present all of that to the employees, but we gotta get working on it. I just, are you guys comfortable with me starting that process even though the budget isn't adopted? What are your thoughts?
I wouldn't start on it right now, myself, but that's just me.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm good with it, as long as you don't talk to Jeremy.
Oh, yeah, we'll exclude Jeremy for sure.
Do you foresee any changes, Dan, in the budget that would change anything?
So, after having, after we had our work meeting, we worked through all the capital stuff, and, and integrated that all into the budget, there was nothing that popped out that was like, "Oh, let's rethink this." In fact, year over year, after I incorporated all of the specific changes on who is doing what, on insurance, and in lieu of, and all of that stuff, it actually improved the picture a little bit by, from a budget perspective, year over year. Now, I'm saying, we're spending more money than we did last year in, in total salary and wages and benefits. But, the picture itself compared to what I thought it was from a budget perspective has improved slightly. It didn't get worse when I crunched everything together. Not only that, we haven't got the final number yet from the county on our property tax, but it's looking like we're gonna have a pretty big bump in new growth. I gotta believe that the impact of, of all of this, commercial development, we're, we should have some pretty good sales tax growth. So, as the, I know I'm the city manager, but I'm also the budget officer. I'm comfortable with this. I don't say that lightly. You guys know I really hedge my, my words, and I'm diplomatic. I'm comfortable with this. We will look at it in again in a year and say, "Okay, are we still feeling good about where things are?" And we're gonna have that discussion every single year when we budget, how much we're gonna budget for incentives, right? I think inflation is finally coming back under control. This was, you know, two years ago. And by the way, we're not doing a separate COLA. Maybe that's something I should've addressed that I didn't. The only COLA that is integrated in this at all is if an employee was recommended to get zero increase based on the study, we gave that employee the lower of, I mean, the higher of, sorry. Rather than recommending zero, we said at a bare minimum, every employee's gonna get a COLA adjustment. That COLA adjustment, which is what we, what we integrated was our, what we've been following was the URS recommended COLA. That has dropped now to a two-point-nine. Two years ago, it was eight-point-one, we did a four. Then it was four-point-one last year, we did three-point-nine, this year, it's two-point-nine. I'm hoping that inflation will continue to, like, COLA adjustments should be minor. They should be a very small thing, so. And, and that applied to, I think, only like six employees, that, that a COLA recommendation was, was the default because, because they were actually pretty close to parity on their job.
All right, so we heard from everybody. So, moving now into item number twenty-two, reports, updates, old business follow-up, and elected officials and staff. I, I should've maybe said, did any of the council have anything else to say on that? I kinda did my thing, and Dan did his thing, we good? Okay. Um, we'll start with council member Topham on reports, updates. Thank you.
Okay, I was able to fill in for council member Burton with planning and zoning. So, planning and zoning, a lot of these things we talked about today. So, they did do a public hearing with the Prime West Development Annexation Agreement, and they obviously gave us a positive recommendation on that. And, they did a partial bound, a partial boundary realignment for Lee Brown, and they did approve that. And then, approval of the eighteen-fifty-one subdivision, preliminary plat, and the Planning Commission did approve that. And... Oh, and then the recommendation to council for the zoning proposed for the Prime West Development, they just recommended what they presented today, so. And that's all I have.
Did you guys say anything about Russell and Mary?
Um, no, I was not going to. We had a consideration of a conditional use permit and got kinda heated. And, um...
A public hearing was scheduled, and now it has been delayed per the request of the individual.
Well, there you go. So, no, I was not going to, but, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
I'm, I'm good.
Um, two-hundred-and-forty-eight hot dogs in my world, that's the only thing I did.
Man, when I drove by, there were so many people in there.
And, um, and the concession stand for all those people on Cyberworld, it's looking better. You know, we got the refrigerator, we got the freezer, we have to get inspected, we have three stainless steel tables, and we got a beautiful sink, we got shelving underneath all the, um, uh, shelf, uh, the entrances to the, uh, the windows that roll up, and, uh, it's looking good. So, we'll be in business soon. That's it.
Thank you for your hard work in there, and for all the hot dogs.
Hot dogs. Lot of them.
Council member Burton, you ready?
Yeah, we met today with the, well, thank you for attending that meeting, council member Topham. We met today with the Historic Preservation Committee. They approved three signs, one Churchill on the sixty east center, Barbara Jay's Front on Main, and the Jim on Main. And they also addressed the, some revisions as far as sign size percentage on the appendix A that's gonna have to go to planning and zoning, and it'll come back to us. Uh, I just wanna mention, the cemetery, Memorial Day, uh, it was, it looked tremendous. They did a great job, those need to be commended, those, the Public Works people. And, uh, the crosses, oh, the, oh, gosh. You couldn't remember her last name, Kristen, I can't remember her first name. Kristen and Jim did the crosses and the flags, did a great job up there. And the program was good, Jerry was good at MCing, and Jed Townsend gave a good talk. The music, the singers were excellent, and it was, it was, it was very appropriate, and it was very, paid a good tribute to the, those people who have passed, and the veterans, and, and so forth. There is a, Carlisle Gurr had Mike Samish do a drone flyover, and his wife Julie. They posted this site up at the cemetery, but you can go on there. And he took pictures of the flags that day, that morning, and, with his drone, Mike Samish. And, uh, and then individually, I can't, I think he zoomed in on some, you know, different places. So, you can get online, see if there's any sites, or any graves, any areas you want to download and print off a picture of. I think this is something they haven't done before, but I think it was really, uh, you know, I think this was a great thing that was, that Carlisle was able to arrange for. I know Mike and Julie, and he does a good job. The site is, I mean, it's up there, but it's called, uh, Brec, and B-R-E-C-K-E-N. And I don't know if there's a hyphen there, at least that's what it says on mine, ridge, R-I-D-G-E, ski, photos, dot com. And, so you can download those pictures if you'd like, and copy pictures. But, at least you can see, it really looks nice. He finally got that put together and finished it, it shows the cemetery and all its, and it's, you know, really, I guess, in its prestigious setting with all the flags and, and things, it was really nice. So, anyway, and we covered the recharge water bids, and, uh, and I think that was all. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Dan?
Yep. I got a lot, I'll be quick. Um, you may have noticed, if you go to perwin.org, it will forward you to perwin.gov, which is our new website. All the credit is really, should be given to Jerry, Brooke, and the mayor. Have been working a lot on this. Anna has helped out. It is, it is far from complete and done and perfect, but we have, we are upgraded to the two-point-oh software, which gives us a ton more capability and ability to do things like we, like we want to with our webpage. So, um, really cool, we have the calendar on here. We're gonna continue to work on it. I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder, I actually wanna have Jerry and Brooke come, once we kinda get it dialed in, to come in and, and walk the public through how our website works, and the calendar, and all that stuff. We're gonna have our events. But, I just wanted everybody to know, it's live, and we are continuing to enhance it. Super excited, good job, guys. Um, as the agenda, as you could tell, we are in the middle of everything. It is the summer, and we are ramping up on all these projects. It's fun to see, we have been working so hard to get ready for them, they're all going. The award that we've awarded tonight to JP Excavation, these guys do not mess around, and they are gonna hit the ground soon, like we're gonna be installing pipe. We're gonna do our best to communicate with the public on road closures and things. In Utah, you have three seasons, winter, 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 and construction. Well, that is gonna be very true in Perwin this summer. I'm sorry of the impact that it'll be, but just know that it is a good thing. When the yellow machines start blowing black smoke with grant money, that's why we're here. That's what, what we do, I'm excited about that, but you're gonna see some real action starting to happen. Like I said earlier, the budget will be available on June second, we will put a copy of it online. If anybody has any questions, concerns, wants to understand what goes into a line item, and by anybody, I mean anybody in the public, anybody on the council, I'm more than happy to walk you through it. Uh, we'll, we'll try to make it easy and readable, but we do have to follow the state format, and sometimes it's hard to understand exactly what it is. It's not meant to be obscuring, but it is, we do have to follow the, the rules on how we show it. And I'm happy to talk anybody through it. We will have a public hearing on the, next year's budget, on June twelfth, and plan to adopt it that same day, unless there's some major, barring some major concern that comes up that the council wants to delay it. But, the plan is to have the budget live on the internet, June second, and available in our office, public hearing on June twelfth, and adoption that day. The following meeting in June will be a public hearing and a, um, amendment to the lit, the existing year. That is the last meeting of the year that we can amend the existing year budget, and we usually do some housekeeping things to make sure that we don't get into a, a, a problem with a, with a fund that's gonna go over or something like that. So, it's like, at the end of the year, you're working on next year's budget, you're working on this year's budget. All the departments are trying to do anything last minute that they planned on doing in the year, and they don't have a budget for next year. So, it's just busy, busy, busy time from a budget standpoint. Aldo and the Public Works crew are working their butts off. You may have noticed that the shade structures are getting completed and finished, pickleball courts. We will have to actually close the courts for a minute as we finalize that. Aldo is, is working hard on that with the guys. They are just like busy bees. We will be opening the bike park, we do know the bike park is not done. They actually recommended, they actually get the kids riding on the dirt, and, and, and wear it in before you go in and you put in your final overcoat. We will be continuing to work on fencing and signage, but the intent is to actually open the bike park while it's still dirt. That's the plan, we'll be doing that this Saturday, the thirty-first. Anna has put together a great open house, and it should be exciting, we wanna see the kids out there riding. We will be doing chip ceiling in the upcoming weeks. I talked to Aldo, we're gonna be continuing some portion of Old Highway Ninety-One, some sub- Um, I talked to Aldo. We're gonna be continuing some portion of Old Highway Ninety-One, some subdivisions out there. Um, Maple Springs and Stillwater is gonna be done in the spring. But this fall, we're doing some, and we're doing some in the spring. But we're, you're gonna be seeing chip ceiling, like I said, construction season, right? Um, Utah Summer Games is going. Um, the opening ceremonies is a ways out, but we will be seeing everybody showing up into town. Our baseball fields are super booked. We've been excited. We were gonna have him here to ta- to talk about it tonight. They'll be doing baseball. They'll be doing archery. Um, we wanna work with the summer games. It's, it's a great way to show off what we have, but it's also a great way to bring people in, to spend money in our restaurants and all that stuff. And we have a, a really great relationship with John Oglesby and with, oh, what's her name, the rec leader? Anyways, just exciting stuff happening there, but you will see impact and people and all that stuff. Um, Juneteenth is kind of a weird floating holiday. We have decided to follow the state. Cali sent out a thing today, and if we follow the state and what they do, it will fall to the twenty-ninth of June. The sixteenth. I said twenty-ninth. I looked right down in sixteen, and I said twenty-ninth. It will fall to the sixteenth, and the city offices will be closed for Juneteenth holiday. Last item I have is, um, due to a recent bill, we are gonna have to do a lot of work, both in a code format and with our fire department in complying with new senate bill, I think it's one fifty-eight. It is all about wildland urban interface. We are gonna have to adopt the state's wildlife, life urban inter- interface code, the WUI. It's called the WUI. We're gonna have to adopt a WUI code. We're gonna have to develop our own WUI map, and it will impact land use and what you can build and what you can't. They're gonna charge a fee, the state is. If you live in this, what they call the WUI, and the fee is gonna be dependent on how risky your house is based on that map. It will incentivize landowners to do materials mitigation, not materials. Um, what do you call it? Brush and shrubs and trees. If you mitigate that, then you can get your fee that the state charges down. It will be based on inspections that will be done by authorized inspectors. The city can choose to be an authorized inspector. We can stay out of it. But they expect us to enforce the WUI code with our building permits and all of that. And guess what? We don't get any of the revenue that they're gonna collect from our landowners. It's gonna go to the county. County keeps its administrative portion, and the rest of it goes to the state. So, we get to enforce it. They get the revenue.
Does it do anything with, like, potentially future, um, requirements for insurance for fire or anything like that?
Absolutely. I was so glad that they are dealing with the insurance component of it. The insurance component of it is massive, 'cause right now, what's happening across the Intermountain West is insurance companies are looking at a map that was done by, like, University of Chicago, which is way zoomed out, and they're going, "Huh, in that general area, it looks risky. Canceling insurance." The, by this same law, insurance companies can't do that. They can do it based on the state's WUI map, period. They can cancel insurance. They can increase rates, but they have to base it on the state's map, and they have to incorporate, if the landowner has done mitigation and has gone from a risk level of three down to a two, down to a one, insurance companies have to take that into account. So, yeah, they can still cancel insurance, but you know what? We're not a socialist state, and insurance is a business. And if a business says that client is super risky, we're not gonna force them to insure that client, but we are gonna say you all have to use the same metric, and that is the state's WUI code. So, there's parts of it that are good. There's parts of it that are bad. But regardless, we are gonna have to comply by Jul- by June, sorry, July first of twenty twenty-six. Some of the things that we have to comply with, the state hasn't even produced yet. They're supposed to produce rules. They haven't started. They have, they're, we don't know what the fee is gonna be. We don't even know how the ins- inspections are gonna work, but they're gonna develop the program. They're gonna have to get their butts in a hurry, and as soon as they publish something, we're gonna have to work through it with our land use, planning and zoning, and come to city council. We're gonna have to train our, our fire guys on it. All of our fee that we pay to the state to participate in the insurance program that we pay into is all gonna be based on the WUI because it is the single biggest threat from a fire perspective that states look at. So, this is just gonna, and I've, I've talked to Alan, our fire chief. I've just said, "Listen, you're not an expert in fire and wildland 'cause you came, 'cause you've done so much intercity stuff. You're gonna become an expert because this is our new world we live, live in." And, but we have good fuels mitigation. That's what I was saying. We, you know, um, Davy Junior has done a lot of work in fuels mitigation. They're gonna incentivize us through what we pay to the state based on our own work as a city. So, anyways, a lot of stuff coming there. We'll talk about it as it comes, and that's the last thing I have.
Um, I don't have anything other than Patty Vesely's celebration of life is on Saturday. It's at Jed's house, and I don't know what time it starts. I just tried to look really quick, and I couldn't find. At twelve o'clock.
I think it's next.
So, it's gonna be in the backyard, really easy to come and go, and, um, it'd be great if we could, each of us could go and at least go by and see Jerry. He's not, you know, he's done so much for the city. Patty did so much for the city. He's expecting a crowd, but I know he'd really appreciate us showing ourselves and showing our support at this time. Um, the only other thing is I would recommend the same thing at the bike park. They do have food lined up by Nick's Smokehouse as well as, I think, other things going on. It's gonna be a pretty big deal, and it would be great if the council could show up, and I'm gonna see if the newspaper would come out and things like that. I just thought of that, sitting here. We should see if the newspaper would come out, 'cause it's a big deal to get that bike park, and Public Works has worked really hard on it.
You said the bike, okay. I didn't hear you.
And the bike park opening is on Saturday, so you could kinda make your rounds and do the bike. What time is the bike park?
To grease up your bike.
Ten. Yeah. So, both of those events, again, your presence would be, would be awesome. Do you have anything, Jeremy, or do you have anything, chief? You just like hanging out here with us? So good.
I'll just say Jeremy makes fast trips to Salt Lake.
Counsel, do you, legal counsel?
Uh, just very briefly, I, uh, was in DC last week, and my flight got back late on Thursday, and from Salt Lake to Cedar City, honestly, the coolest thing I saw was the P. Uh, it was just, it's just awesome. It's a cool town, and congratulations, Cali. That's all I have.
Cali, did you have anything?
Um, I do have one thing. Um, because we run our meetings loosely based on Robert's Rules of Order, I would like to respectfully remind the council that when a motion is made, there should not be any discussion until a second comes up. Um, and then if, if you have suggestions on, uh, correcting or amending the motion during the discussion, you can make a motion to amend the, um, motion. And then, so that gets voted on, and then you can vote on the amended motion. We've been getting, we've been talking over each other and, "Oh, say this, add this." You know, "Do this, do this," and, and it's made things very confusing. So, I just want to remind you that when someone makes a motion, somebody should second it. Or not. It can die, but, um, hold your discussion until after it's seconded.
Cali, doesn't that amended motion need a second also?
It does, yeah. It, a, a secondary motion would also need to be seconded and voted on. And then you vote on the amended motion.
Right.
Thank you.
And you amend, you, you amend the motion once it's been seconded?
Yes.
I know it's kind of a loose Robert's Rules. Sometimes they'll say a friendly amendment to your motion a- as they're making it. I've, 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 I've seen that happen a lot. I know I do that. I, if somebody's making a motion, I'm gonna say, "Can I, can I make a, a, a friendly amendment to your motion?" And, but, but if, we could choose not to, not to do that path, but once there's a motion and a second, you gotta deal with it. And if you're gonna amend that thing, then you gotta do that with another motion and a second.
Yes, yes.
And please, Cali, always step in. If you feel those things don't feel like you can't correct us, I don't think there's anyone that doesn't appreciate the correction.
Okay.
Cali, Cali goes to trainings, and they're always h- helping our recorder in, in things like this, in our records management, in our elections.
Oh, that's cute. And it's cute and tiny.
Yeah. So, when we get fouled up, we will, we will say, "Cali was a good book, say."
Good job, Cali.
All right, so I need a motion to adjourn, and don't amend it before we get a second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'll, did somebody second it? Good.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
If you oppose.
Everybody, that Breckenridge Ski Photos dot com does not have a hyphen, and I've been looking...